Good morning, everyone, and welcome out to our regular meeting of Tuesday, June 4th. And for the record, it is 9:05. If you'll call, please.
Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Romero.
Present.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Present.
Mr. Duran.
Present. Ms. Valendo, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, who is the agenda amended, what's your names? Danny?
Mr. Chairman, the agenda that we have in our folders that we were given Friday, is that the correct one, or is there something else that needs to be circulated? I believe this is...
This is it?
Yes.
The others in our folders from Friday?
Yes.
Well, no, one thing was taken off the agenda, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. The reclassification from the Juvenile Agent Office, has that been deleted from the agenda?
That's correct. And what item is that?
That's 10-K-2.
Oh, but it's not, it's not...
Yeah, that was in the packet, and now it's not in what we've been given as the amended agenda.
That's correct.
And that's the only change? That's the only change, the only other thing, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, is that our manager's report, Commissioner Romano had asked for an update on the concert this weekend, and so staff is prepared to make a presentation on the concert and update the commission for the Thursday concert.
And, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the classification, if I may ask this, to why it was, was taken off, I was just kind of wondering if it had anything to do with the recent request by our county assessor for the reclassification of her staff. And what I understand, in conversations that I've had with our other elected officials, that they made requests for reclassification of various positions in their departments, and they haven't had answers or responses from Personnel Department.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Romano, we have actually responded to those. In fact, the commission voted on that in open meeting at the last meeting. It was very clear, and actually, the assessor and the treasurer were both here for those meetings. That's what we're looking at for September timeframe, as to bringing those back up, reference the reclassifications of any of those positions. There's been several discussions with the assessor and the treasurer on this. We've also talked to them during the special meetings for the budget that has been approved, and all of them are aware. The only reason that Ms. Gonzalez had put this on the agenda, as we reviewed it on Thursday, we found that she had put in her reclassification for the JBC, and is, what was part of the course for the rest of the, of the staff across the board, was that we would review those in September of this year, which is about four months from now after the new physical year comes in, and look at how the GRTs are going.
Okay. Commissioners, under the Commissioners' report, also, we were asked to, that on Mondays, the first Monday of every month, we are on KBOT 1340, and yesterday, myself and Mr. Archuleta were on the radio, and after we got off the radio, we got a call from NACI down there, and I guess we, I don't know if we sparked or we lit a fire at the radio station, and they have asked if we would be willing to go back on Thursday and ask, answer some more questions. The mayor was gonna try to be there at the same time, but under the Commissioners' report, will make a decision if we want to even take that on, if that would be alright with the Commission.
And, Mr. Chairman, what was the issue?
The, the issues were on the, again, with the library, are we, basically, the county's saying that we're not funding some of the, I guess, entities that all the county is using, and, you know, we, Mr. Archuleta, myself, did make the point that we do fund the mobile library, and we do fund the Letapo Community Library also, and she would, they were unaware of that, so it kind of put a, you know, kind of a halt, and then the other thing that, the other thing that they were looking at was, again, the dispatch, or the 911, and wanting to know why we're not moving forward with it, and the options that we have had actually offered to the town, and I think that the town has been forthcoming in letting people know that there really is other avenues that we have offered to them, but they have not really considered them, because they think that, and I said it on the radio, they don't trust the county.
Mr. Chairman, I guess in response to that, one of the things that I would say is that maybe we need to look at them also for help in funding a lot of the projects that Taos County now manages, say, for example, the indigent fund, which is well over a million dollars that we expend on a yearly basis, ambulance service, Mr. Chairman, as well as a lot of our road department needs, a lot of the residents from the town, if they want to go as far as segregating the population, maybe we should ask them to help out in funding a lot of our road department projects, Mr. Chairman.
And, Commissioner, those are exactly the issues we brought up yesterday, exactly, because, you know, the ambulance, you know, is funded primarily by the county.
Right.
And, and we brought that up, and brought up about the roads that lead to the town, you know, that they're taking on by the, by the county, and we kind of made a pretty good statement, and I think the, after it was all said and done, I think, the call that I got yesterday was that the mayor was a little upset, and, and I think rightly, I mean, you know, they opened a can of worms, and, and I think we, we...
And, Mr. Chairman, let us remind the public also that the county also funds the mayor's Mother's Day event on a yearly...
There you go.
On a yearly basis, and it is a private event, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we can really go on and on and on about what we do and what we do not do, and I don't want to sound upset, or mean, or anything, but in defense of our county residents, Taos County residents, there's a population close to 40,000, they do spend quite a bit of money in GRT, which funds the library and other services that the town provides, Mr. Chairman, and so they need to look at that, but they also maybe need to consider redirection of their management as well, Mr. Chairman, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero, and as we get down to the Commissioners' report, we, maybe we can discuss that a little bit more, and decide if you want to actually be participants on that particular day at 9:30, or one of us, you know, or maybe Mr. Archuleta, or, or Mr. Ballas, but at that point, so, we can just add that on to the, to the agenda. So Commissioners, with that said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So, Mr. Chairman, we do have a motion, we have a second.
Second. And a second, cultural vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Burrows?
Yes. Well, go ahead, five citizens concerned, discussion and consideration regarding the following citizens, which enter speech, will limit their comments to five minutes, no action will be taken. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? We'll go with Ms. Valendo first, and then we'll move on.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and audience members. I have an addendum to CAV's request for contract services funding, and I'm gonna pass it up so you can see it. Thank you. It's been a while since I've been here, and you all have a lot more efficient agendas than you used to, I appreciate that you have the time for the public to speak. It's not by accident that I'm here on the public section. Community Against Violence has been providing services in Taos County for over 35 years, back when I was a little tiny child, just a little tiny child, and I've been here for 20 years already at Community Against Violence, and since we began, the agency has grown tremendously in direct response to what the community needs. We've been working very hard in making sure that there is not one adult, male or female, one child, that goes without emergency services when it's needed. As most of you know, we provide shelter, as well as direct crisis intervention for adults and children who are sexually abused, or physically abused, verbally, emotionally abused. Each of our staff, client years that we've been here, the problem has increased, and in response to that, we've increased our direct services on primary prevention. Last, the last two years, CAV had a contract from the Department of Health as the primary prevention, technical assistance to the state of New Mexico, because our program follows the best practices of the nation, tailored to meet the diverse needs that we have here. I think that's something you all can be very proud of. We also have great outcomes for assisting adults and children who've been through sexual abuse and domestic violence. We also provide services for people who are developing, and elderly with dementia, and I want you all to know that this is very hard work, that it's not as hard as the victims have here, and we want to thank you for allowing us to provide these services under funding for contract for services for, from Taos County, and we want to provide you with this information as an addendum to the request you already have, that shows the local government contract for services, that the percentage of funding that's been provided by Taos County, last year, the percentage of the cost of providing services was .54 percent that was provided by the county, and in the current year is .33 percent. As you know, that's a teeny amount. You have provided a contract, which we are grateful for, but we need to consider the actual cost of providing emergency services for that many people in the county versus what you all provide, and, so, trying to balance the gratefulness and the need for you to really, really think hard about the costs of being there 24 hours a day for a 26-bed shelter, for providing counseling and crisis intervention, to hospital response, for same-unit response, the amount of services that are needed here is far outweighs the amount that the county is contracting for, so please consider that. Our average case load on the month is approximately 120 to 150 adults and children. Over the course of the year, last year, we provided services for 571 individual people, so, if any of you have any questions, I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time, I'm going to reissue, some of you have been on a tour at CAV, and some of you have not, please come. It's an enormous feather in the hat for our community to have the services that are needed, when they're needed, every single time they're needed, but it's also one of those things that you have no idea the amount of services needed by our community until you see it firsthand, so please, come, give me a call, and I appreciate it very much for your consideration.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes, thank you, well, thank you, the CAV really does so much great and important work in Taos County, and I know we really appreciate it here. I'm not smart enough to do this arithmetic, so .33, 5,000, 5,000 is .33, what's the total budget?
1.5 million.
1.5 million. And, I, I know that what the county's been doing now is just looking at all these non-profit requests and maintaining the same contract that we've had last year, that's, that is what we've placed in our preliminary budget. I, I agree with you, I think that .33 is too small for this, for this agency, for the work that you do, and for, for your budget, and when the homeless shelter that I've been associated with came, I read this short statute for them, so I feel, I have to read it for you too, it's, it's really very short, but this is a state law that talks about counties' participation in with nonprofits, and it's 4-38-13.2, and what it says is that the legislature, the state legislature finds that without the daily contributions and efforts of thousands of worthwhile nonprofits dedicated to serving sick and indigent persons in the communities of New Mexico, the state would be inundated with constant requests for health and human services that it does not have the revenue or resources to provide, and therefore, the legislature finds it in the best interest of that population, as well as all residents and taxpayers, that consideration be extended as real value recognition of the indispensable part of these services contributed in Mexico. And that's, that's a directive to county governments, saying that you really need to find someplace in your budget to try and compensate for these services that nonprofits provide in the communities, so, we'll see how the final budget negotiations go, but I just wanted to let you know that, from one Commissioner's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Blankenhorn, and I appreciate you pointing out the .33, it is a tiny amount, I know it's big for you, because you're looking for that money to cover your budget, it is, if you compare Village Acuesta, which I threw on the paper, just as a comparison, it's the same amount that Village Acuesta contributes as a contractor services.
Commissioner Romero? Thank you very much, Valendo. Mr. Chairman, the question is for our finance director, Mr. Corlova, I know that historically, I think 6,000 dollars has been the amount in previous years, what I understand, six, seven, in fact, it's a little less suggested this year, I was wondering if there was a window, an opening somewhere for the possibility of funding some more with regards to this particular request?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, we do have that window between now and the final budget, and it would be at the level of the commission if they would choose to increase that, it would have to come from somewhere, but could, at the level of the commission, choose to fund more. Right now, it is a 6,000 dollar placement for this year.
And, I, I think there was a question, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the invoicing from, from last year.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, they have invoiced us out this year, we contacted them, and they immediately came and got us everything we needed, they got it into us last week, and we'll be able to pay them out before now.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as, as you know, we put, excuse me, that funding under the 399 without a request, and so that is definitely what we would like the commission to mull over, in looking at all those requests that are on there, those are the requests that we have received for Taos County, given that we've also put what we have funded in the past, and so, you know, we can cut from other programs, or we can move money around through, through the different options that are available to the commission, and we would ask that you guys take a look at that before we submit the final budget.
And, Mr. Archuleta, it can, and down the road, I understand, possibly from the hospital, with the, I wanna say, the money, the 1.5 million dollars that we dedicated for the hospital, that they might not be able to use that money the way it is written right now in the law, and if we get that money back, is there possibly that money could be then used for this type of organization?
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, off the top of my head, I'd have to say unfortunately not, the money that we are giving the hospital is solely for the discretion of indigent fund, if we could somehow legally look at that, to see if there's any compensation that we could do to another organization based on indigency, then that's a possibility, but the GRTs that are generated from that money is solely for the use of indigent fund, and so, when we've been looking at that money, there is a possibility that we may even have the last quarter returned back to Taos County, because we have not paid that out yet, in conversations with the Human Services Department, they have basically said, because of the federal investigation that's going on, that for us, not to pay that money out, but that, unfortunately, reverts right back into that same fund number, which is the indigent. We can work with Leebel and with the indigent coordinator to see if there's any way that we could justify, under the law, moving that money over for indigent, see if we can claim some type of indigency on services under that.
If we could look into it, give us a report.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a great idea, you know, and if, because basically, you serve as the same clients, CAV, and the fund recipients, so it would be a really good idea, Mr. Chairman, if staff can look into that.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yeah, the one problem with that, of course, is that if we, the, that money gets tripled by the hospital, and so, you know, it really makes more sense for the community to put it, all of that money to the hospital, so that they can get their triple, and, you know, it just brings in that much more for the community's health, but, you know, we're looking at 5,000 dollars and the 399 fund, another couple of thousand, or 5,000 dollars that would gradually increase our percentage of help to CAV, is certainly within the levels of tolerance, it seems to me, it's a very small amount relative to our own 14 million dollar budget, I know that we have to be careful, but I think this is a way of being careful, actually, of, you know, getting, getting ourselves up from the .33, I think is, is important for, for this particular organization.
And, Commissioner Blankenhorn, the only reason I suggested that particular fund is, I understand that we might be getting that money back, and even, and it'll just be sitting there, so that's the only reason I recommended that, is, that's possible, but yeah, I agree that we need to fund this organization more, so, thank you, Valendo.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Philpkin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I drive all over Taos County, and I haven't had too much occasion to use the road on the, on the west side of the gorge, it's, it's a spectacular road, and it's been needed for a long, long time, that's our feather in the county's road path. A lot of you Commissioners weren't here during that, deciding that, but, I like to give a thumbs up when I see one, it's a wonderful road, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? We'll just state your name for the record also.
Jeanne Green, good morning. I'm here representing, well, there's several representatives here regarding this, but we would like this entered into the public record about the library, it's a statement that we'd like to pass on to you, and also, we have over 350 petitions, signatures, that we collected in under two hours, and so, you know how popular and important this issue is to you, to all of us. So here's the statement from this group, it's Citizens for a Free Taos Library. First of all, we support the county commissioners and your decisions surrounding the proposed annexation of Highway 64 by the town of Taos for the airport expansion. We encourage you to take all measures to keep the El Prado area within county jurisdiction. We also support your audit request investigating the town's mismanagement of E-911 operations. The town of Taos is failing the public in multiple areas of service. Changes to the library budget are a grave concern. Our library is under duress, losing employees through attrition and services through budget cuts. We understand that the county is nearing completion of your annual budget, and I don't think the library's gonna count as an indigent fund, but it could. Thus, we request that you consider for your next year's budget a substantial contribution for operating funds for our public library. We also understand that county residents already pay for such services through gross receipts taxes, however, considering that 80 percent of Taos library cardholders are county residents, it is evident that the services provided are invaluable to both town and county. Our library provides education and recreation for so many local youth who are vulnerable to the three-pronged dead end of poverty, gang violence, and illiteracy. New Mexico, including Taos County, ranks number one in these societal fields. Our library provides a way out for many, it is an immense benefit to all ages, both locals and tourists alike. As you know, the town of Taos is imposing an annual 10-dollar fee for county cardholders. We strongly oppose this move. Free libraries are an important tradition of our democracy, free and available to all, regardless of age, gender, race, income, or class. We hope that Taos County will support this longstanding tradition, and create a way to provide the needed support for Taos library to the benefit of all of us. And so, I have these petitions, signatures, and this statement that I'd like entered for the record. Thank you.
We will give a copy.
Commissioner Blankenhorn? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that statement, I really agree with all of it, except for that budget part. The thing of it is, I just wanted you to know, I just wanted the public to know, that the town is anticipating raising 125,000 dollars with their 10-dollar fee, and so, in order for the county to eliminate that fee, we would have to come up with 125,000 dollars, you know, and as you've just heard, we're, we're haggling a little bit over another five or 10 for, for CAV, there, there's no way that we can fit 125,000 dollars into our budget. The town hasn't even made that request, they, they know, they, I don't even think they've made a formal request for 10,000 dollars, like CAV has, they haven't made any formal requests to us, because they know that there's no way that we're going to fit within the budget the amount necessary to eliminate that 10-dollar fee, especially in a year when they've chosen to move the command center unilaterally from its place on Civic Plaza Drive, it is, is anticipated to cost another 400,000 dollars just for the move alone, let alone additional operating expenses. So they, they know that it's a totally impractical and impossible request, and when they came here, they didn't even make that request, but now, councilmen say, oh, the county needs to step up to the plate, the county needs to do this and that, it's, it's really nonsense, you know, it's, it's 125,000 dollars that we absolutely cannot deal with in next year's budget. Over the course of the year, we're going to have to watch and see how that plays out for the town, and maybe we can make plans for future years to make sure that that library is, is safe and free for the community, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, I just wanted to say, you know, the town is failing the public, they're doing things that are just outrageous with our money, and we don't have, unless we recall them all, we don't have a way to keep our public library free for all, which it's, you know, it's a tradition of our democracy, and it's important to every, it is important to a whole lot of people in this town, and in this county, they come from everywhere, and even the tourists use the library, and so, we're just hoping that you'll find a way somehow to help to fund it. I'm, you know, I think the town is wrong to say, oh, the county needs to stand up to, to, you know, but we're at a loss of what to do, and, and it is a huge benefit to the people in the county, so we're hoping that somehow you will be able to put something into your budget. We're not asking for, you know, to fund the whole thing, we're just asking to help, so, thank you.
Please.
My name is Marquita Dendman, taking into consideration, Commissioner Blankenhorn, your statement and your concerns, and I, I think I agree with you, I think it is the town's responsibility, and, actually, I think what we're looking for, we're looking to you for leadership, for responsible leadership in the wise use of taxpayers' money. Taxes are means by which citizens pool our money to provide services for everyone, which we can't afford on our own. we can't afford on our own, such as the roads, schools, uh, and the library. So personally, I'm not asking, um, for the county to provide the money because I, I, I don't see it as your responsibility. But, um, we first said that we support you in your, um, uh, decisions surrounding the proposed annexation of, of Highway sixty-four for expansion of the airport. And we also support you in your, uh, investigation of the dispatch center situation. That is responsible wise use of taxpayers' money. And if you save, if you save that money from those two unnecessary projects, the town will have money for our library. So I think what I'm asking for and I think our group is asking for, wise leadership because it's not being provided by the town. You know that as well as we do. And, um, one reason that I'm really very, um, concerned about our library is that it's often quoted that a democracy depends on an informed citizenry. And the library provides the means for people to become informed and educated. And so I'm hoping if you prevail in your efforts to spend our money wisely, we'll have the money to open our library beyond six o'clock in the evening, which to me is outrageous, and open it up so that working people and students will have that service available to them. So that's what we're asking for, is responsible leadership and we're coming to you for it. Thank you so very much.
And I think literacy in our community is very, very important. So I think, you know, as we continue to move forward and, and the, uh, library issue keeps coming up, I would be one commissioner that would be willing, if we could not find it in our budget, to go out to the community with you and see if we can. I know we raise money for, for Straight Hearts in certain ways, we raise money for C A V in certain ways. I think we can raise money for literacy in our community in certain ways. So I would be willing to help in any fashion that I could. Come on, man. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my name's Hope Bukler and I would like also to address the library situation. Um, and it, cause I think the library is certainly a prime example of, uh, the, where no distinction should be made between town citizens and county citizens, between town leaders and town, uh, and county leaders. And, uh, I think a fee for the library services makes that distinction, unfortunately. And it also flies in the face of the mission statement of the library, which I'd like to read. Uh, the mission of the Taos Public Library is to provide and facilitate freedom of access to informational, recreational materials for everyone. And I think the everyone and the freedom are the potent parts of that statement. A fee certainly hinders freedom of access, especially for working people who might not be able to afford that little extra ten dollars. So I think that a fee hinders the mission statement and, uh, makes that, as I say, that distinction between town and county residents. So what I'm hoping is that the town and county can come to some sort of solution. And I think it's true that we're all at a loss as to where the money should come from, but I think sooner rather than later, if some solution can be found to, um, keeping the fees away and keeping the library truly free as the mission statement states, would be very, very helpful and very good for the general feeling in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. I think, is this on the same issue? No. Oh, no. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, my name is Veronica Sanchez and this is Denise Frank. Um, we're both social workers here in the community of Taos. Kim Hamstra couldn't be here this morning, um, but we're talking for the three of us. Um, so as some of you guys know, we've developed a crisis system of care alliance here in Taos County and we've been working on coordinating the efforts with that alliance. Um, we've come today to thank you guys for your support and the assistance with submitting an early diversion grant through S A M S A, which will serve individuals here in our community with mental health and substance use, um, concerns that are also experiencing a crisis. And so, uh, we just really want to say thank you for all of the help and assistance that you gave to us in order to do that. It was quite a big project and, um, Mike Truhill was instrumental in sitting with us for about three days to get that done. And so we just, uh, appreciate all of that assistance that you provided to us. Um, we also wanted to come in and personally invite you guys to a leadership conference that we will be having on June twentieth. Um, so we have invitations with us. It's okay for Denise to hand those out to you guys. And what we're planning on doing during this time is talking about our future plans with the Crisis System of Care Alliance. And we're really fortunate because Taos was chosen out of three counties throughout the state, um, for the progressive efforts that we're doing in, in these regards. And so we have a couple of national experts that will be joining us that morning. And so we really look forward to your presence there. And again, we just, uh, thank you for the help that you provided to us in this area.
Thank you. We appreciate, it's nice when, when we, you know, when somebody comes and we actually did something good and, so we really appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, uh, just, uh, want to thank Ms. Frank and Ms. Sanchez. Uh, ahead of time, I want to let them know that, um, I, I myself will not be able to attend this particular event on, um, June twentieth. I will be at the New Mexico Association of Counties Conference and hold this. Thank you. Anybody else? Please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mrs.
Can I say good morning to the?
Please.
Good morning. I'm glad you're all here because I have very, very interesting news. In, I have a picture and I've given one to a lot of commissioners and the mayor and everybody I can. It's a picture of the plaza, downtown plaza, when it burned down. It burned down in nineteen thirty-two. Many people don't know. I've taken it to the senior citizens, I've taken it everywhere to show them. They said, we didn't know. I think this is part of history of Taos and it should be told. People should know about it because the history of Taos is very important to, to me and to you, I'm sure. And so I made some copies. This was in nineteen thirty-two. I wasn't born yet, but my father-in-law happened to be in the plaza when it was burning down. So we had a tiny little camera and we took a picture of it. And it still shows some of the buildings. They couldn't stop it. There was no water. They couldn't find the water. But I guess there was a ditch and they had a water brigade. They finally stopped it, but it was almost burned down. There's a place there, Plaza Cafe. That's where the fire started. Many people have told me, I didn't even know the, the town burned down. Many people that are from out of state, out of Taos, they studied the history of Taos and they know. I think it's very, very important to the people. Everybody knows about it because it's history. It's part of our history. I'm from Taos. My parents were from Taos. A lot of my family grew up here. Three blocks from the plaza. And like I said, I think it's very important. And it would be wonderful if this could be enlarged or, or placed in the old courthouse and also in the new courthouse before and after. I believe, like I said, it's, this is history and I love to study history and I'm sure that all of you would like to know more about Taos, what happened in the past. And not only you, but the people that moved here. Because a lot of people ask me, Rose, how come I didn't know? I said, I don't know. I know that my parents knew, my great-grandparents knew, but we weren't around them. So, like I said, I, I believe that this should be placed for people to know about it. At the old courthouse especially and the new courthouse. To me, this is very, very important. Who, do you think it's important? It is. So that's what I wanted to bring.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. Uh, Steve?
And I gave all of your copy already. And I gave some to the mayor and the other officers. And they said, when I says we'll get to it. I haven't, I haven't seen anything yet.
Couldn't this be presented to the, uh, committee that looks at this and possibly get this?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, absolutely. Something that we'll get, uh, over to the arts committee, uh, to see if it could be part of the initial group of ten, fifteen, uh, paintings that they want or photographs that they want for the, throughout the, the complex. And then once we finish the old courthouse and the renovations of the old courthouse, it would be nice as something that we could put over there also.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, we understand because, I don't know, history is, we can't really get back, but we can, we still remember. Like I said, my mama and my daddy, they grew up here, three blocks from the plaza. We used to go to the courthouse up there. When they had courts, my mother used to take me, I was an old girl, and I don't know, it's just part of my, my, my family, my culture. You know, I just think Taos is very, very incredible. And I want to thank you for your time and I appreciate whatever it is.
But, Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman and, um, Ms. Valdez, as to the, uh, committee or, uh, board or commission that is being referred to by our chairman and our county manager, um, is the county commission has appointed an arts commission, uh, to review, um, works of art, photographs, images, sculpture that may, uh, someday possibly enhance the walls and courtyard of our, of our, uh, human complex. Um, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, um, that, uh, that particular commission that's being headed by Gina Ellen from our staff, um, consider this particular image. Uh, I think it is a, a beautiful photograph of Taos Plaza in nineteen thirty-two when it, um, burnt down. Um, and it, it tells a lot of stories. It tells, you know, a lot of the history of, of Taos. Unfortunately, at the time, they didn't have the water to be able to fight this, this great fire, so it devastated the, the whole plaza. And it's amazing how there's all these people also standing near the, uh, gas pumps, you know? But in fact, the whole plaza is in the process of burning down, but, uh, you know, tells you how far we've come with the safety of our residents and the public. But it is something that would be a very great image, uh, as Valdez, to be able to, uh, be able to, um, reproduce out of this. Is this what you have? Is this your original?
No.
There's another image?
I loaned my original to someone.
Okay.
At the old courthouse. I remember where, I know that they kept it.
So in fact, Mr. Chairman?
So that's a next.
If this is all you have, Ms. Valdez, this stuff?
I have some more here.
Uh, we could probably, in fact, reproduce out of this and clean it up somewhat.
I think maybe you can, but, and so I want to thank you and, you know, what happened when I was in the plaza, I had a shock there. A lot of tourists, they knew that Taos had burned down because they studied history. A lot of people in Taos don't study the history of Taos because we live here. I asked a lot of the senior citizens because I wanted to know if they knew. They said, I knew because my parents told me that it was burning, that we're trying to help. So I want to thank you for your time. And did you want any, anymore? Do you need any more? I have two more there.
We have some?
Anybody?
Maybe, just, just, if we can make them available to our county manager so that he can share them with that particular arts commission that we have.
I have one left.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we actually got one yesterday.
But you can make some copies of it.
Thank you. So thank you again. We really appreciate it. So, and moving on, commissioners, uh, anybody else? How are you this morning?
Hi. I'm Ellen Hoff. Um, I, I, I'm here for the library too. I'm a former library employee and, um, I want to join my friends in commending you for your, um, not giving in to the ambitions of the town in relation to, um, annexing El Prado on the highway and, 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 um, you go. Um, I thank you for, um, your lawsuit and, and for, um, admitting that. I, I, I wanted to stress that this could be an urgent problem with the library simply because if these policies are instituted, it will then, um, be hard to rescind them and, um, and that, though the town keeps making promises and saying things that aren't true and, um, you know, patently in the last town meeting that we attended, that in fact, if, if there are, these fees are instituted, even if they say that it doesn't apply to old people like me or children, that, um, the library has a policy of requiring that for children to get library cards, their parents must have library cards. So if there are people who are parents who are then, um, reluctant to get a library card simply because they can't afford the ten dollars and there are people this poor in this town, um, their children will also be deprived of the services of the library. So, um, although I know that all of this budgetary stuff is, um, sort of set in concrete for this year and, and that, in fact, the town is trying to scapegoat you for its own, um, screwed-up priorities, um, please keep in mind that this situation is important. It's, um, the library is simply one of the most popular institutions in all of Taos County and, and to keep it viable, we're going to have to try and deal with the big-headedness of the town. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Peter Rhodes. I happen to use the library and am here for completely different reasons. But, uh, what are the suggestions that I might make to the commissioners? Is that the Carnegie Foundation for Peace, Andrew Carnegie funded many of the libraries in the United States. We could appeal and maybe the commission, the commission could appeal to the Carnegie Foundation for funding for this particular aspect of the library. I, too, agree, it is not a good idea to charge the people in this town for the use of a public library. Therefore, it's really no longer, it becomes a private institution rather than a public institution. Thank you.
Thank you for that tip, uh, Mr. Archilas. Maybe we can look into that and see if that's possible.
And I was to sue it myself. I can call the Carnegie Foundation. I'd rather be there.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it very much. Anybody else who would like, under the citizens? Nobody? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on, Commissioners, to minutes, discussions, consideration regarding the following, April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting, Commissioners? We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not offered at all.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blaney Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Drack?
Yes.
Chairman Barone?
Yes. So, we'll go on to presentations, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. Presentation of Employee of the Month certificate of the month of May presented to Ms. Paula Santi Esteban in the accountant from the Treasurers Office. And Commissioners, I think it would be great if we step around and really congratulate this young woman for the work she has done for the county.
Chairman, members of the commission, Taz County congratulates Paula on her achievement of winning the Employee of the Month Award for the month of May, two thousand thirteen. Paula has always been, has been an employee of Taz County for seven years. Paula has been recognized for always going above and beyond her duties as senior accountant. She is always available to assist the Treasurers Department as well as other departments. Paula has been the go-to person in her department. There's no issue big or small for her, and she does it all with a smile. She is very professional and willing to help think, and she's very professional and willing to help. Thank you, Paula, for your hard work. You are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Just for the public information, Paula will be given the certificate for one day off to pay, and also gift certificate to Walmart, thus a letter of appreciation. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Paula, so much.
Can you get that in front of us? I know you're supposed to be here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations.
I have to finish this before I leave. Here's an inch of just a couple of hours.
Next, we'll go, a request for funding for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, dash fourteen, for eight Northern Indian Pueblos Council Food Distribution Program. Mr. Rob Corabi, I believe, I hope I didn't mention that, the executive director.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Staff, Residents of Taos. Good morning, my name is Perry Martinez. I am the Program Director of the Eight Northern Indian Pueblos Council Food Distribution Program. And at this, at the time, this letter was sent, Mr. Corabi was our Executive Director. The Eight Northern Governors are in a transition right now, and Mr. Corabi is no longer with the organization. It's Gilve Hill as the interim director, and we should have a new Executive Director by the end of June. But first of all, on behalf of the Eight Northern Board of Governors, they sent their meetings to the Taos County Commissioner, Chairman, and also the residents of Taos. Before I begin, I just want to, Commissioners, really make a comment about your staff. As I came in to here, your staff was very wonderful, were there to greet, ask if I needed assistance. So you have a very wonderful staff, and I just wanted to mention that before I begin. My name is Perry Martinez. I run the food distribution program, and I'm here to ask for your favorable consideration of renewal of our funding agreement for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. This is with the food distribution program. The Eight Northern Food Distribution Program provides services to the residents in Taos County and also in Pinasco. Under our program, there are three qualifications. Number one qualification, first of all, you have to reside within one of the Eight Northern Indian Pueblo boundaries. There's certain portion of Taos that falls into that category, and also the majority of the Pinasco area fall in there. The second criteria is that you cannot be on food stamps in our program at the same time because we're our sister program to the food stamp program. So it's either or, you cannot simultaneously participate in both programs. The third criteria is that you would have to qualify based on income. There is an income criteria that we use, and it's dependent upon the household. And we provide two deliveries to the Gonzalez Agricultural Center every month, and also the Paca Community Center in Pinasco. Residents are also allowed to pick up at the warehouse if they so choose. So, the funding agreement will, I know Commissioner, Chairman, and also County Manager, I did send you a copy of the agreement, and there was some information, a letter requesting the continuation of the agreement, also some statistical information for your review as well. That pretty much has a breakdown of how many residents that we provide service to assist to in the Pinasco area, how many we provide in the Taos County area. Our fiscal year runs from October to September, so there is some information. It gives you a breakdown as far as total participants, total households, the total amount we saw during that fiscal year, and it gives you a breakdown based on USDA prices. I'll give you an example for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. The amount of people that we saw during that was twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred. And if you take that price at USDA prices, which is ninety-four dollars in the food package we provide services, just the food packet of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-six. If you take that at the value, if you were to purchase these products at the store, it's about two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two thousand. The agreement that we're currently asking for the continuation in years past, and we've had this agreement since two thousand three, was for thirty-five thousand. We did come in for thirty-five thousand yet last year, but because of the economy, Taos County contributed thirty thousand. This year, again, I understand the economy, and I understand your deliberations as you go through the budget process. This is a request, requesting a favorable consideration. And the program has been in existence for a number of years, providing services to the Taos County residents, and I believe since the early nineties, late eighties, where we funded that agreement, there was a gap for several years that Taos County, because of financial reasons, was not able to continue this. And we did approach Taos County again in two thousand three, where you have continued to provide that services. If there's any specific questions, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Chairman? Richard?
Mr. Martinez, last year, I think they stated that this money was being used for fuel expenses.
Yeah, actually, there's a combination of, in years past, we've used the money to partly fund a certifier for the area. Then we've also used some of the funding. Majority of the cost is for fuel costs, some supply costs, or truck repairs. So that's what the cost is. I did speak with a gentleman, Rick, I believe, yesterday. He called me, and he did indicate that the county managers were requesting a breakdown in the budget of how this money is utilized. So I'll be working with him to get that information to you.
Because I'm asking this question because I don't like to sound, there's a conflict because of it being used for fuel or not. I don't like the term reserve looked at.
Under the agreement, I don't think that it specifically identifies fuel costs or any costs. It does identify the cost for funding for a certifier and for any other costs associated with the program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner? What sort of food is distributed through this program?
Commissioner, I don't know if you've received the handout, but there is kind of just a brief listing. If you take a look at the Eight Northern Indian Pueblos Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservation, it's a program overview. It does give you basics of what we do, sir. Currently, years back, we used to have only canned products, but the food distribution programs has expanded, so we basically serve, we have frozen items, we have frozen ground beef, we have frozen chicken, we have frozen cut-up chicken, we have frozen roast, we have frozen turkey breast. We've, even there for a while, had frozen bison and frozen stew meat. Currently, we do have fresh fruits and vegetables. So pretty much anything that is available during that growing season, we have available. We have apples, we have oranges, we have grapefruits, we have tomatoes, we have strawberries, we have broccoli, pretty much whatever. Plus, we also have the canned products. We have frozen fruits, frozen vegetables, we have cereals, we have flowers. We pretty much have everything that you can pretty much get in a grocery store.
And are they organic or grow organically?
Well, actually, the food is purchased by the United States Department Agriculture, Food and Nutrition Service. So they do have a warehouse. Ours is what is called Americo, which is Kansas City USDA annually purchases the food, and it goes into that warehouse. We order our canned and dry products, it comes in once a month, and our fresh produce comes in once a week. We order that through Albuquerque. There is a company out of Albuquerque that delivers once a week, so every Monday, we receive fresh fruits and vegetables.
Mr. Chairman, your request this year is, what, what amount?
Thirty-five thousand. That's been the standard amount, but I know last year, the county, because of budgetary, approved thirty-five thousand. So, you know, again, it is whatever is available, but the request was thirty-five thousand.
And, Mr. Chairman, can you kind of give us a breakdown how this funding comes to you?
Through Taos County?
Excuse me?
Taos County funding?
Well, no, how the funding for this program?
The funding is set aside, we're, as I said, a sister program through the food stamps. We're under the food stamp program, and there is a basically amount that is identified for food distribution programs on Indian reservations. There's four programs in New Mexico. We belong to the southwest region. There is nineteen programs in Oklahoma. Nationwide, there's probably about a hundred and thirty programs throughout the whole United States. We provide services to about two hundred and fifty Pueblo tribes and nations throughout the United States. We have small programs, the smallest program is probably about services, I would say, maybe about two hundred people. The two biggest are the Navajo Nation, Cherokee Nation, that service between ten and eleven thousand people. The funding is allocated through Congress. We're part of the continuing resolution, the farm bill. The funding is identified, and they're allocated into each region. And then each region, basically depending on the food distribution program's negotiation, is then funded through that amount of money. And in some years, basically, they only have a certain amount. And the way the program works is that the federal government funds seventy-five percent of the total cost, and the entity has to provide a twenty-five percent match under the total amount that is given to each ITO, Indian tribal organization, is what it's called.
Now, that match, is that an in-kind match?
It's a combination. It's an in-kind match, it's a dollar amount. The Taos County portion is used as part of the in-kind match, and then the Eight Northern Organization comes up with their match as well.
So, and then the amount that you receive, is it based on the amount of people you serve, or is it?
There's a formula that the United States Department uses. A lot of it is, they take into consideration the population, they take into consideration if we're what we call a tailgating or non-tailgating program. A tailgating program is a program that is, goes out, makes deliveries versus non-tailgating program as well, where they service everything at the warehouse. So they take that into consideration. There's a number of areas that are taken into consideration to come up with a base funding for this particular program.
Commissioners, Commissioner Director? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Martinez, what is the total budget?
The total budget right now for our program is, don't quote me on this, I'll give you a rough number. I think our total number, our total funding is eight hundred thousand for this program. The amount that we receive of federal funding is about six hundred thousand. The total in-kind match is about two hundred thousand.
And what are some of the other sources for the in-kind match besides Taos County's?
The Taos County, we use Taos County match, and then we use a tribal match, which are either buildings in-kind contributions that they put towards a program, or if there's any funding specifically from each tribe. Everything's combined as an in-kind contribution, in-kind match.
Do you have any other major sources of cash for that?
Not, not under the Eight Northern Indian Pueblos Council, because we're a five oh one C three nonprofit order organization, and if you've dealt with nonprofits a lot of times, we don't have the latitude to seek any additional funding because we're limited to a nonprofit status.
And is the town a source?
The, excuse me?
I'm sorry, is the town of Taos a source of funding for your match also?
The town of Taos, the only match that we receive is the thirty-five thousand. Is that, did I answer your question?
That's the contract that you?
Yeah, that's the contract, yes.
In addition to the counties?
From the town of Taos, no. And the town contribution or the funding agreement covers both Pinasco and Taos County, or Taos, the town of Taos.
Okay. So you don't have a contract with the town, you just have a contract with the county?
Only the county, this is the only contract, actually, the only contract that we do have with any other entity is with the Taos County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to whether funding sources, do you ever, as the casinos, there's two or three of them in northern New Mexico alone, do any of them assist in funding this program?
They do assist, and not in, really, again, it's a governmental entity. It's up to the government, and as Eight Northern, their consortium, they created the five oh one C three, which provides services, not only food distribution, but other services to residents. So I fall under the five oh one C three. I don't have a direct relationship with the tribes. If anybody did have that direct relationship, it would be through the Board of Governors. So I'm kind of under this auspices, so to speak.
Right. So I guess I was just doing a little bit of quick math. You know, if Taos County contributed thirty-five thousand dollars on a yearly basis, one thousand fifty-eight participants, it averages out to a little bit more than five dollars per individual for that six-month period.
Yeah. And I guess to explain the uniqueness of the program as the food distribution programs on Indian reservations, you won't find any other programs like this program, except for the four programs here in New Mexico, the nineteen that have been identified. So under that umbrella, they provide the services. And if absent the match or the funding agreement that Taos have, say for instance, if this was no longer provided, then I would have to look at different ways of providing that services, whether it be limited deliveries, cutting the deliveries, and having everybody would still be welcome to come into the warehouse. So those are kind of the challenges that I'm dealing with. And this funding agreement allows me to actually go into the community of Pinasco, into community Taos, to actually provide that service to the communities. And then we do also go one step further. We try to work with the, what we call home bounds and individuals that for medical reasons cannot actually come to the delivery site. So we try to make deliveries at the request to the residents to provide that service as
So this is a consideration that's being looked at in our budget, correct, Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, it's actually in the three ninety-nine package for you for budget consideration.
And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I do understand that this is just an initial meeting. It is consideration, and I do understand that, but I would ask for your favorable consideration on this request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have the preliminary budget already that you looked at. We don't have to turn in it till July thirtieth, is my understanding, but we wanted to get it in earlier, so we will schedule a meeting for consideration of the final budget with the Commissioners, so that we can hash out all these issues as far as funding and who we're going to fund for this year. Again, I would just ask the Commission to, all the requests that have come to Taos County are currently in there, with the funding request from last year, the current funding request, and how much we basically have put in the budget for this year to do it. However you choose to fund or move money around is up to the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anything else, Mr.? Okay, we'll go on to item eight, contracts, agreements, MOUs, and bids.
Okay, we'll go on to item eight, contracts, agreements, MOUs, and bids, discussion, considerations, and decisions regarding the following. Request for approval of renewal number two for the contract to the Main Society of Taos, EPA, Straight Hearts Animal Shelter. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, the county has a contract that was originally entered into three years ago with the Straight Hearts. It was renewed once, there's a provision for two renewals. This is a request for the second renewal. It's a twelve-thousand-dollar-a-month, a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar-a-year contract for Straight Hearts to provide the services for animal control and pickup strays. And what's in front of you is simply a renewal of the existing contract for an additional one-year period. This was originally prepared by Ms. Martinez. I think the copy in your packets has a mistake on the date, which I corrected, and the clerk has to correct your copy. And substitute your name and just have it.
Mr. Chairman, the year before was over, a hundred thousand? And have they provided the services? I haven't got that one. So, you got all this request here from T A B, now for this food program, you know, and the ancianos?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have toured Straight Hearts early on when I came in, and the county manager looked over and see what we were doing, reference our, our funding and where that money was going. They have expanded some recently. At the time that I actually did the tour, the city and the county animal control officers, both were there with dogs and cats that they had available. I think at the time that I was there, they had about seventy-five dogs and about twenty-five cats that they, that they had within their facility. I did see them over the weekend, they were out doing a pet adoption over at the town of Taos, over at the, they have the, I forgot what it is, but where people sell their goods?
Farmer's market?
Farmer's market on Saturday. And so, they are trying to move along some of these adoptions and get some of these animals out of there. But we do use them on a continuous basis. That's where we take all our strays from Taos County. As the Commission has heard over the last couple of weeks, Mr. Cordova and some other people in the Prado area actually had a situation with a dog. The vet from Straight Hearts actually had to reuptate that, that dog's leg, and they're looking at actually doing adoption out of that animal at this point, or reuptating him. I don't know what the previous history on that is. Like I said, I just toured and looked at that when I first came in.
Mr. Chairman, the animal control budget is totally separate from this request, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that is correct. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Commissioner Blakenport.
I'll move for approval of the renewal and make a request that we invite somebody from the shelter to come and address the county at some point, so we can ask questions about operations and see how things are going.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. So, we have a better idea of, you know, dollars per amount of animals that we're actually taking in. I know in the years past, there's been a port, a period of time where they would actually quit taking animals, so I want to make sure that's not happening also. So, thank you. Any further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Not called for.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes.
We'll go on to item B, recommendation to award bid, number two thousand thirteen-dash-seventh, House County Detention Security Fence, Alson B. Hill, person purchasing officer, and Richard Sanchez, construction administrator. Request for contract approval first, and then request for notice to proceed. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Ms. Alson.
In your package, you will see in there on the agenda, request for showing the four bids that we did receive. Of course, one was non-responsive due to some documents were not provided as requested through the bid process. Right now, we are asking to award American Fence Company, who came in with the lowest amount of twenty-three thousand one hundred for the Taos County Detention Center Security Fence, which will enclose the back area as well, another area in the front. I know this has been delayed somewhat in the past, and I'm trying to get this executed and so we can get the process going. So, we're asking for approval of the bid, and we're also asking approval of the contract, and also have approval for notice to proceed, so we can get this process and this fence up as soon as possible.
Mr. Malone, all legal and proper?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the contract, and it's, it's proper. I would make one request of the Commission because of the fact that Ms. Hill and Mr. Sanchez are requesting approval of both the bid and the contract at the same time. I have not been at liberty to discuss the contract with the contractor. They may require some minor changes, and the Commission would give me the authority to make minor changes if they ask for them. That would be appreciated. If not, I'll have to come back and report to the Commission. So, if that could be included in a motion, if, if that's the Commission's question.
Someone to approve with the written permission, you have two seconds. I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering if anybody locally had submitted, obviously, they didn't know any of this.
Um, no, all of them were out of Albuquerque.
Did you contact anyone locally?
Um, we had put in the advertisements in the Taos News, Sunday Mexican, Albuquerque Journal, and the Real Brand Sun. A lot of local contractors were aware of it, but they felt that they probably would not have the funds to actually support this project, since they do have to see how much the fencing costs and put so much down if they do get awarded the bid to have that fencing available and needed for them to put up.
I see, okay. Then, in your opinion, Mr. Sanchez, would this kind of take care of some of the problems that we're having on the backside of that facility?
It should. It's, excuse me, it's the high security. You can't climb it unless you take your shoes off and stick your big toe in. It's going to have razor wire along the top and along the top of the existing masonry wall. I mean, you really have to be determined to get in, and it's heavier wire than what's normally used.
And, Mr. Commissioner, Durant says nothing to keep him out.
It's even cemented at the bottom into the ground, so it's going to be tough to dig underneath it also. But if you have big bolt cutters or a torch, I mean, staff has been keeping a pretty good eye on the alley and whatnot, so I think if there, somebody's out trying to get in through the fence, they'll be able to alert the proper authorities. But I think it should stop everything.
Commissioner Romero?
Mr. Chairman, I, with regards to the coverage on the bottom of the fence, what you, you mentioned cement?
Yeah, the fabric needs to go twelve inches into the existing soil and will be cased in twelve-by, twelve-by-eight-inch ribbon of concrete between the holes, so.
So, I guess then where we, the motion was to approve the contract?
Yeah, the bids, the contract and notice to proceed.
There's going to be two motions, correct? So, we have a motion on the first item, request for contract approval, so called for.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes.
So, request for notice to proceed to the American Fence Company. Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second. Anything that legal needs to add to that?
Mr. Chairman, I think it was already included in the motion that I have not been at liberty because the contract wasn't awarded, to actually discuss the contract with the contractor, and that if minor changes are necessary, that I have the authority from the Commission to do that.
Yeah, go ahead, call for the vote, no further discussion.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Now that everything was approved, how long?
After they have notice to proceed and they've signed their contract, it'll probably take about fourteen to twenty-one working days to receive the material because of the special order, and we'll give them ninety days to complete. But it's got to be done within probably ten days, working days, for them to make any money, so I'm sure they're going to come up and knock it out.
Thank you. Resolutions and ordinances, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. Resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty-seven, a resolution making a finding of the Taos County Commission, and the appeal of S U P zero-zero-two-dash-two thousand thirteen from the decision of the Taos County Planning Commission. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, the county commission voted at the previous hearing to deny the special use permit. The chairman requested that I prepare the decision, and our land use ordinance also required a rewritten decision. This is a resolution by the Commission adopting the written decision. The motion to deny was originally made by Commissioner Blakenport, and that was the Commissioner Blakenport's input in preparing this decision. And Commissioner Durant was not, was not present at the public hearing, and so he should abstain from the vote on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve, and, Mr. Malone, thank you. It's a very detailed and accurate set of findings. Appreciate the work.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not called for.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
I'll abstain.
Chairman Broome?
Yes. So, resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty, a resolution making a finding with the Taos County Commission in denial of the L U R variance zero-zero-one-two thousand thirteen. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, this is the, similar to what we just addressed, the, at the same date, there was a separate public hearing on variance request. The Commission voted to deny the variance request, and again, the land use code required that there be a written decision, which I prepared, and again, in consultation with Commissioner Blakenport. This written decision is in support of the denial of the variance.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion, I'll, I'll second.
I'll second that, thank you. Same editorial comment and word, thank you, Mr. Malone.
Any further discussion? If not, called for.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
I'll abstain.
Chairman Broome?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item C, resolution number two thousand thirteen dash twenty-nine, a resolution for a special election proclamation of the county commission of the Taos County, calling for the conduct of an election, asking the voters to approve or deny a one-quarter of one percent gross receipts tax on the privilege of doing business in the boundaries of the, via the Los Rancho's water and sanitation proceeds to go to the district for, for district purposes. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, this resolution was prepared by Ms. Martinez before she left, but I've reviewed it, and I've consulted with our clerk, Anna Martinez, and this is in order. Ms. Martinez, Ms. Anna Martinez has checked all the dates and will take care of publication, but this is for a gross receipts tax election. This one is for, by.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve. I'll go ahead and second discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, I'm on the board of the Los Rancho's. Should I abstain from this vote?
I think it would be appropriate to abstain, Commissioner.
Very good.
We do have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Discussion, you think the mayor might have a problem with this?
You know, that actually, by, by passing, well, because it's a taxation district, they can't, they cannot actually annex that area, so.
I thought I'd throw that in, Mr. Chairman. Called for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes. Item B, resolution number two thousand thirteen dash thirty, a resolution for a special election proclamation with the county commission of Taos County, calling for the conduct of an election, asking the voters to approve or deny a one-quarter of one percent gross receipts tax on the privilege of doing business in the boundaries of the El Prado Water and Sanitation District proceeds to go to the district for district for district purposes. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, this is identical to the previous resolution, except it's for the El Prado Water and Sanitation District. Again, it was prepared by Ms. Martinez before she left, but I reviewed it and consulted with the clerk, Anna Martinez, and clerk's office will take care of the publication and obviously running the election.
Someone to approve?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, and of the question, Mr. Malone, I know that it's, the date for the special election is in the document, the resolution in itself, but for the public's benefit, since we do have a camera, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, if you could indicate that date.
Let's go ahead and take me a second to turn to the proper page.
It's at the, Mr. Chairman, it's on the face of the resolution. And if, I'll just read it, Mr. Chairman, a special election shall be conducted by the Taos County clerk, which will be held on Tuesday, September third, two thousand thirteen. And I believe both the elections for the Vaya and the El Prado Water and Sanitation District will, will take place on that same day, Tuesday, September third.
Mr. Chairman, just since this is for the public's benefit to alert them to the election date, this is a mailing ballot, as I understand it.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Malone. So, you got to give the same statement you said all about?
Well, on that, on that, on that particular area, I don't think that holds true, but we are presently like that. So, we call for the vote already?
Yes.
No, called for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenport?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes. Department matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. Human Resources, Mr. Brent Hadamil, modification of job description for M I S Network Administrator, webmaster, Conrad Cordova, M I S director.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission. At our prior Commission budget meeting, it was discussed of adding a new position to the M I S budget, and Mr. Cordova wanted to make some modifications to that job description. Those are included in your meeting packet. You have, the first job description is of the approved changes. The second portion is on the redlined format of the changes that we're making to the job description. It was not at the budget hearing for the discussion, but part of the intent of this position is to streamline purchases for I T and having more of a centralized purchasing. So, this job description also takes into account of working with a county purchasing officer, as well as our capital asset person as well, so they'll work in consultation with the finance department. And I stand for questions on the job description. We're not asking to change the pay grade. The pay grade will remain at the pay grade twenty, which if the Commission approves this, pay grade twenty, the minimum hourly wage begins at eighteen forty-seven, and the midpoint is at twenty-two point forty.
And, Mr. Hadamil, you said this is a job that we approved already?
I wasn't involved in the budget discussions.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, now, it was presented in the work study and last week when we did the budget. This is the additional position for the M I S department, and as Mr. Hadamil kind of expressed, it'll, it'll give support to the M I S, but it'll also work in helping to streamline all I T purchases. This is the additional position for the MIS Department, and as Mr. Hadamio kind of expressed, it'll give support to the MIS, but it'll also work in helping to streamline all IT purchases. And so, they're gonna work hand in hand with the asset manager and our procurement officers, so that we can basically get IT purchases uniformly done and maybe start some kind of replacement cycle over time, but it seemed to fit better under an MIS with the expertise of MIS. Much about computers will be done, how much they cost.
And this budget within your, you know, your request that was asked of all departments about the one percent.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, yes, and that's the way it was reported to the Commission at the last Commission meeting, was that this was taken from the existing budget that our IT, Mr. Cordova had, and we had added in there, and that's part of the overall picture of what we did, as it was discussed at the Commission meeting and also at the budget meeting. This is the process of us actually centralizing a lot of our contracts, a lot of things that happened within Taos County, currently, our practices, that people buy different types of equipment, which require different types of software, which then also put an overload on our computer system. And our hope is that all of these positions, all of these purchases will be coordinated through our MIS Director. We'll be able to hopefully buy them in bulk, first of all. Instead of buying them individually, we'll be able to sign contracts or maintenance agreements in bulk instead of doing them individually, per department or per elected official's office, and we'll also be able to cut down the cost-saving measures in the future for all of Taos County in that aspect.
Mr. Chairman, don't we have this position in the county in our previous years?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, actually, this position has never been filled. The job description was initially written quite a while back, and it's never been filled or approved. The other thing that this position will also do is currently, our webpage is hosted outside, and we're gonna bring that insight, and this person will fill it. We're in position, so we can do more highly customized work for our webpage, which is currently kind of limited right now. We don't have very good granularity to do specific things, and we wanna start bringing in the idea of an open government and transparent government, and so this will address a lot of those for us.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chuleta, this will kind of go hand in hand with the fact that we wanna go paperless agendas eventually?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, absolutely. As you noticed, and also in the budget hearings, we put in four or five iPads for the Commissioners. We've also put one in for our MIS Director, and we put one in for myself and the Assistant County Manager, so that we can have those available. And I believe one for planning was the other one, because our goal in the future is that we have a lot of these burn permits and some of these other things on the web. And so, this is the process of actually having more control of our website, having more information out on our website. Yesterday, a letter was sent out to all the Division Directors and all the elected officials, basically asking them that we need to start moving forward, putting everything on thumb drive, having it available for Commission meetings, so that we can move it up there. Part of this job description also will be some training for the Commissioners and for staff, so that we can handle one of two aspects. If Commissioners feel or staff feel comfortable enough having the iPad actually downloaded at their home via email, then we can send the package that way. If they don't have email access and those things, we can, what we can do here is download the iPad and have that ready for the Commissioners or for staff, and then it's basically just a matter of opening it up, and then you can read through it, just like you read through the booklet. So, we can do the download here, we can do the download via the web. It's the two process of actually doing that. So, it's our attempt to move towards that. The other thing is that we wanna look at some bigger issues of central purchasing, like our Xerox machines, as we expressed to the Commission, we spent a huge amount of money on that. We wanna definitely go paperless. But the other thing that we wanna make sure that we do is that we no longer sign individual contracts through each department for the Xerox needs that we need there. Another issue that this is gonna sort of take care of is that we have a lot of standalone printers in individual offices across the county. We're gonna do an assessment of that. First of all, if we do have those standalone printers, we should have all the same type of printers, so that we can order the ink cartridges in bulk. But the other thing that we're gonna be looking at is if we have a Xerox machine and a Xerox copy machine within that group, you know, other than maybe elected officials and department heads, everybody else should be printing off the Xerox machine. Cut down on our costs, cut down on our maintenance costs, and hopefully, cut down on our printing, and that's our ultimate goal in the future. So, it really ties in a lot of where we're moving towards a more green and efficient Taos County, but it also helps with transparency. As Commissioner Broome and myself were asked at the radio station, reference the numbers and proposals that we put together for the Town of Taos. People are asking, can we get those on the website, so that we can go through and look at those numbers and look at all of that? And so, all the presentations, the Commission packages and stuff will, in the future, be on that website, but we need to gain control and have access to be able to do those things in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, let's wish you the commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the change in the job description, and just say that I think it's a really good idea of the notion of centralizing purchasing and providing greater transparency and going paperless, and so I think, I think the department's involved with bringing this idea forward, and County Manager, and I look forward to the progress, and wish you good luck in finding a good employee to fit this position. Mr. Chairman, I also have a couple of questions for Mr. Hadamio that I'd like to ask after the vote's taken. On a slightly separate issue, but as long as we have the human resources here, I just have a few questions.
And I'll go ahead and second that motion, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion? Not a call for a vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Durant?
Yes.
Chairman Broome?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
I didn't realize my motion was that funny, but.
Yeah, something kept on.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Malone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Brent, we've had all these requests for reclassifications. Can you tell us how many departments have made requests for reclassifications? And I realize what we just did was not that, this is separate.
We've had a request from the Treasurer's Office. We had the one request, the one position from the Assessor's Office. We've had, did meet with the County Clerk and the Deputy on a couple of occasions, and they were looking at reclassifying two positions there as well. And we had also informally discussed reclassifying the Planning Department as well, some of the positions there.
How many positions in the Treasurer's Office?
The Treasurer's Office, off the top of my head, there's eight positions that we're looking for reclassification.
And the assessors?
Total employees or for classification?
Reclassification.
One.
And the planning?
The planning, three or four positions, and we're waiting to see the outcome of what's gonna happen with the Town of Taos. I think any reclassification in that one might be on hold.
Well, in fact, they're all on hold, though.
Right, correct.
And so, is the plan to bring all of these potential reclassifications back to the Commission at, what date are we looking at?
From what I understood from the County Manager, we were looking, uh, the second quarter, beginning work in the end of the first quarter, which is September, and then revisiting it probably in October, if not later.
Mr. Chuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to add that, as you had seen in the previous agenda, we also had a reclassification request from Juvenile Detention. I also, across my desk, have had a reclassification request from Facilities Management. Juvenile Detention, I think, was looking at reclassifying five positions, and Facilities Management was looking at reclassifying three positions. I do have some comments after, if the Commission wishes to hear those, but we will entertain the questions at this point.
All right. Chairman, Commissioners, the Sheriff has also requested a new position, begun gathering other job descriptions from other counties regarding investigator or detective. I'm not sure how it'd be, come before the Commission, but he asked me to work on that job description yesterday.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I have another saying, you know, one statement. As for the people that work for the elected officials, you know what I mean? These elected officials, you know, trying to, we're trying to provide a little money for the workers, but these elected officials, they were elected to do the job. That's their job, you know what I mean? We started reclassifying everybody, and we're gonna be on a bind, you know, down the road, ten years from now, or whatever, you know? This county's gonna have to go back into thirty-two hours of startling of people, you know what I mean? Because we cannot sustain, you know, reclassifying everybody, you know? It's not, it's not durable, you know? Now, the thing that we're gonna look at is on this annexation, you know, once a town starts annexation, or if it goes through, I mean, how's the county gonna support its own people, you know? We ain't gonna have the tax base to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Brent, do you make recommendations regarding any of these requests? And if so, what would be the basis of your recommendations? Is there some guideline that you use to determine whether or not a reclassification is appropriate?
Generally, what I use as a guideline is that's the actual job description. I look at the length of years that maybe an individual has, for example, the Treasurer's Department, and see if their length of years warrants that they should be a one, I mean, a two versus a one. So, that's one of the factors that we look at, and maybe education as well, and you continue in education.
And so, when a department head contacts you and asks you to work on a reclassification, you discuss it with them, and you make a recommendation to the department head and the County Manager?
It, yes, and it also varies by department head, elected officials. Some department heads or take more of the lead, and we're more in a support role. With the particular changes in the job description that was put today, we worked hand in hand with Conrad, and we also did meet with members of the Finance Department to make sure the language was correct. So, it depends on the department head, elected official, how much help they want.
Can you give me an approximate amount that, in each, each of these reclassifications would affect the budget? Is it five thousand a year? Is it a dollar an hour, which is?
From what I understood, and the Finance Director, the County Manager told me in this, is the Treasurer's Office would be an additional thirty-five thousand a year. And I don't know if that includes benefits or not. I didn't do a cost analysis on assessors, and we didn't, we're just waiting on the Planning Department to see what the Town of Taos would do.
So, if there's eight positions that Mr. Hio seeks to reclassify, it's about four thousand dollars per request, per year?
If we average it out that way, I think it would be, it would vary dollar amount on each person.
Anything, sorry, Commissioner, but you don't know that that includes benefits?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that he included the benefits. What we did is, the very first budget we showed you in the work study included the extra, and then we took it out after the directive of the Commission last week, and it was about a thirty thousand dollar difference, including him.
Mr. Chairman, are we reclassifying ourselves for an arm?
Well, I'm afraid a county attorney wouldn't allow that. Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. So, and, sorry, Mr. Chuleta, is leaving, oh, okay. So, basically, what we're stating as a board right now, I guess, or we have stated, is that our current policy is to wait until the fall to consider any additional new positions or additional reclassifications. Is that where we're at?
I think, well, go ahead and structure that, see if you're right.
Hold on, let me ask a question first, Mr. Chuleta. Whatever happened to the study that we did about four years ago? What was it called? The new?
Reclassification.
Reclassification, wasn't it?
It was a reclassification and a compensation study that the County Board of Commissioners approved in December two thousand and ten. The vote that the Commission took in August or July of two thousand and twelve upped the classification system by two percent across the board. So, we added two percent to what the Commission added in December of two thousand and ten, and that's what gives us our current starting wages and our maximum high point. The midpoint remained the same with the Commission, and July or August of two thousand and twelve voted for two percent. Cost of living adjustment, we also, the Commission also voted to increase the compensation by two percent across the board.
And I think that's a moving target, that other number, correct?
Correct.
We need to move that almost yearly, correct?
We could, we either move it, the contract with the union, and we have also personnel rules that say that we should look at it annually. But it depends on if it's, if there's language that says if it's feasible, if the county can afford it. I can't remember the exact language, but if there's funding available, we could, we look at it.
And Commissioner, I think the reason you were bringing up that reclassification, because at that point, everybody was reclassified, correct?
Correct. Of course, I was in here, but from my understanding, as a consultant, was hired, I think he was paid approximately fifty thousand dollars, and each, the work of each department had an elected official to reclassify each of the positions. Some positions were retitled. In some cases, the starting wages were lowered. Nobody lost any pay, but they were lowered because they also looked at the market of what these positions should be paid. In other cases, some of the positions' starting wages went up as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to come down here, because I think it's a little easier than for me turning sideways or you guys turning sideways to look at me and answer some of these questions. I wanted to share a little bit with the Commission. Off the top of my head, I wasn't prepared to present for this today, but some of the ideas and thoughts that I have as the manager of Taos County, and hopefully, some of the reasons that you guys have hired me to do this job. Within Taos County, what I have looked at is that there's really not a ladder effect when we come to employees in the specific positions from the Treasurer's Office, you know, and everybody going to a Treasurer III position. You know, if we do that, and the Commission chooses to do that, that will be the direction that we will follow. But I wanna warn the Commission that part of what would happen in that aspect is that you would have, the majority of those employees happy for about a year to a year and a half. After that year, a year and a half timeframe follows, then they're gonna be requesting to go to a Treasurer IV position or a Treasurer V position, which we don't even have in our paid classification plan, because we're upgrading them all for a specific reason. Anytime a position comes to my attention for reclassification, the first thing that I ask is, do you have it in your budget? That's the first, the first thing we ask. The second thing I ask is my HR director to go back and look at everybody else comparable within that position. And this is keeping, basically, the union in mind, because if you give it to an employee who's been here nine months, who's received two raises within that timeframe, and you have an employee who's been here five years that hasn't received an upgrade, then that becomes a union grievance issue. So, we wanna look at those things and head those things off before we move in that direction. But the third and ultimate for me is financing for Taos County, and also morale, retention, and all of those things as we move along. My hope is, in restructuring and having some input into the budget and to looking into the future, is that you hire a one-year employee that's just barely coming to Taos County as a new employee, and is here to start a career with benefits, with weekends off, and, you know, air conditioning roomed and all of these things. And I would like that person to stay in that position and earn that position to the best of their power. to the best of their abilities for about four to five years. Then that person could move as a treasure one or a clerk one to a clerk two position. And hopefully through our timeframe, as we address with the commission, that we would allow some flex schedules, so some of these people could go get a higher education, could go get more certifications, and qualify through that treasure two or clerk two position, and then move up into that direction. As their career continues to move along, then three to four years, and some people will move through that quicker, and some people will move through that slower. Again, they will get some more of those certifications, get some more of that education, maybe get a bachelor's degree at that point, or whatever is required of that job description. And now we have a career individual who's looking at promotion, and we have movement throughout that office or throughout Taos County for those different positions. And that's the uniqueness that we just don't have right now, unfortunately. What happens is that people come into Taos County, and they stay within those positions because they're kind of stuck there. Part of the concerns that I've heard in some of the assessments and surveys that I've done with staff is that, you know, they feel that we don't have the time to go away and actually do some schooling, to get some of these certifications. And so through the flex schedules, our hope is that people can flex out their time throughout the day so that if they're taking classes at U and M between four o'clock and seven o'clock that night, that they don't have to take an hour a week of their time off, that we can actually flex their schedule out so they can go there. And that's something that we're wanting to bring in front of the commission. But my biggest and my ultimate goal is that we actually have this career ladder for people so that they don't feel stuck, so that they don't feel like they can't move anywhere else. And my fear is, by these promotions across the board, I always ask for, could you give me a reason why you want, you know, to do this promotion across the board? In particular, in the treasures office, the requirement that came to me, or the request that came to me, was that we have, we have a lot of outstanding property tax bills that are out there that the state's gonna take over. And if we look at those, and everybody within the office is working on those, and we give everybody a ten percent raise to help with those, then we can bring in more, more money for Taos County. Well, what I did is I went back to the treasurer and says, let's take that a different step or a different area, because what happens when you finish with the hundred and fifty delinquent cases, or the two hundred cases, or two thousand cases, however many we have, everybody still has that ten percent increase. And so what I did is I said, why can't we give them a temporary position, which the commission met here at the last budget meeting? Now we have an individual that, one, you know, we're not committed to, and they're not committed to us for the next twenty-five years, quite honestly. We're not paying a lot of the different annual leave, sick leave, and all of those things. And we're specifically targeting a situation, instead of targeting that situation overall throughout the whole office. It saves budget, it saves money, in my opinion, and it makes sense. And we target that specifically so that we're not committed to that individual in that aspect for the next fifty, twenty years. If at the end of six months or eight months, we find out that, guess what? I mean, it's a revolving door, and we're having more and more tax collections, then at that time, the commission can decide to go ahead and make that job a permanent job. But I just, it's just difficult for me to say, well, we have eight people within the treasures office, and all eight of them are willing to work on this if we give them all eight a ten percent. And I would rather be very direct in the aspect of what are we wanting? Who's gonna be responsible? And how are we gonna do that? So, you know, we don't have to change all the job descriptions. You know, if we're not collecting that amount of money, we can't go back to eight people and say, well, this is your job, this is what you're supposed to be doing, and we gave you a ten percent raise, all of you, to do this. It's more directed towards that individual. But above that, what's, what my goal is, or what I'd like to ask the commission to consider, is that we make a career ladder for staff. I think that's what's truly important, is that we have the entry-level positions, and we have the career positions, and that we create those along the way. And that also means that staff have a right to move from department to department also. So, you know, if somebody's in the treasures office and they want to eventually move to the assessors office, then my hope through the flex schedules and through the educational and talking with, with U and M, that we can provide those opportunities for staff to try to get that type of education in front of them. So I stand for questions from the commission. I'm hoping that that answers some of the questions that you're asking today.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the treasures office, there's individuals in there that have been there for many years. And I don't want to name any individuals, but there's one individual there that's probably been twelve, thirty years. And in fact, you know, her pay hasn't gone up very much. Yet we do have individuals that have come in, newer individuals that have come into various positions in the county, and they're in fact making more money than that individual. So I don't see any quality to that. And those are things that have happened in recent months. And I have to question that, and I will question that with you on a one-on-one basis. How many individuals in the treasures office are there that are currently seeking this reclassification that have been there for more than five years, do you know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, what, the proposal that was put to me from the treasures office was that there would be six, six to eight individuals, I believe, that would be, that she wanted to upgrade across the board. And again, when I asked for the reasoning behind that, it was because they wanted to go after the delinquent taxes and the money that they could possibly do to bring that in. And so what we did is that we actually gave them a temporary employee to go after those delinquent taxes and do that.
We're, we're, in the clerk's office, there's, there's one individual, I believe, that was, the county clerk was seeking reclassification for. And that individual has been there for many, many years. And yet there are employees throughout the county that are making a lot more money than she is. So again, it's just making sure that there is nepotism, you know, that we are treating everyone equally. You know, today alone, we just thank someone, you know, we honor her as employee of the month. We want to make sure that we follow through with those, those words and what we're saying that we're gonna do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, absolutely. The request from the clerk's office has not come to my desk as of today. I can tell you that it has gone to HR in the preliminary discussions of that. We have asked them, or the HR director has asked them to look at the budget and also the justifications for those, but as of today, it hasn't come to my office. We do have a particular incident, and we are taking those on a case-by-case basis and looking at those individuals. And I know that the assessors office also, as I explained to the commission previously, had brought two requests to my desk. One of the requests I could actually do on my own with the authority from the commission, and which we did for the assessors office. The other one was the, at the, you know, basically in front of the commission, which the commission denied. So it's, it is on an individual basis now. And I also understand that, you know, we have individuals, like I said, that have been here five, six years, or fifteen years, that haven't received some of those upgrades. But I'm not sure that some of those individuals haven't also applied for the higher level positions, or to have seeked out the current certifications that they need in order to seek those. And, and part of that is because, you know, in, in their eyes, Taos County hasn't been family-friendly or educational-friendly in that aspect. And that's why we have instituted the committee, one, to recognize our employees, but two, to have that committee and those thoughts heard, so that we can bring those in front of the commission, reference flex schedules, educational leave, any of those, of those needs that we could help the individuals with. So we're definitely taking a look at those. I would be more than happy to discuss any single event or personnel privately so that we don't bring that out in open forum. But, you know, that's definitely something that I'd be willing to discuss and have discussed with the department heads if they brought it to my attention.
Brent, I do have a question for you. As far as the, we create that money out for that evaluation or to decide, wasn't in that study evaluations were supposed to start being done in every department? And how are they? Have we seen any of them? Have we reviewed any of them? Have you reviewed any of them?
Chairman, yes, evaluations were supposed to be done. And that's actually the note I handed here to Mr. Archuleta is, there will be beginning in July. And that's the former county manager, as well as the commission's mandates to him, as well as to Mr. Archuleta. We want to begin with this next fiscal year beginning, the evaluations. I know it's taking longer than what the, what the commission would like. Apologies that it's taking longer than what the commission would like, but we're ready to go forward in this next fiscal year. We do need to make some changes to the personnel rules that we need to move forward in June or July as well. The evaluations won't be contingent on the changes to the personnel rules, but we can move forward on that as well. And in reference to comments made, Commissioner Romero, regarding one of the employees, the long-term employees that you asked about, that employee did receive a raise last August of 2012. So I'm not sure if they were aware of it, but that was also a sticking point for the former treasurer as well, to get two individuals a raise. And so that's, so we can speak with you individually on that as well. But that did happen for that employee. And the county clerk's reclassification, I did mention to Mr. Archuleta, but we're also waiting to see what was gonna be the outcome of the discussions with E-911, if we were gonna take on another thirty employees, whereas, it wasn't thirty employees, excuse me, if we were gonna take on the new employees, what that would do to the budget. So we were waiting, we'd let Ms. Martinez know, we haven't forgotten about you. And then I would tell her, we haven't forgotten about you. We did look, there's a county clerk deputy three, the highest classification. There's no other counties in New Mexico that have a clerk four, so we would need to do something different on that position as well. But I was doing checking with other counties, if there's such a thing as a clerk four, and there's not anything such as a clerk four in other counties.
Commissioner? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I don't know how to put this, but, you know, what kind of workforce do we have? You know what I mean? You know what you're telling me about the treasurer is, hey, if you don't give me the ten percent, I ain't gonna work on the delinquent part, you know what I mean? I think this is a bunch of BS. You know, the treasurer should say, hey, you, you would give work on that, that part, you know, the delinquent. You know, it's like, you know, they're telling, come to the commission and saying, hey, I don't get a ten percent raise, I ain't gonna do it. Well, I got news for them, well, then I don't need to have them hearing that. That's the way I do it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what I was saying was that in order for us to try to bring in the additional revenue on those outstanding bunnies that are out there, what we've done is actually given them a temp employee to help Ms. Cordova bring that money in, set up payment plans, and try to work with them within that three-year period so that we don't lose those tax dollars out there. I think Commissioner Blackenhorn had asked a question that I didn't properly answer, and I wanted just to touch base on that. And, you know, the timeframe that I've told all the department heads is September of this year. The reason for that is that I'm hoping that by that time, we're very clear on the 911 and where we are. We will know what the levels of GRTs are that are coming into Taos, and if we have a substantial decrease on that. One of the things that I've told staff and that I've talked to department heads about is that I went out on Wednesday afternoon last week, and there were no bikers in town. I went out on Thursday, and there were no bikers in town. Normally in Taos County, we would have bikers coming in Tuesday evening, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I checked the hotels, Thursday night, Wednesday night, and they were probably at about forty to fifty percent capacity at max. The report's out of Red River right now is that from about twelve to ten thousand bikers, which is what's been previous, has dropped down to about six thousand probably this year. The other thing is that if you went out on Monday afternoon and went to the plaza or anywhere else, I went through myself several times and only counted two bikers walking around the plaza with their, and the, and the way I identified them was with their hardy stuff on. Where normally you would see them lined up in front of Michael's Kitchen, you would see them lined up at the hotels, we would see them up and down our road systems. We're not seeing that, and I think the town of Taos is suffering because of the loss of those GRTs now, and it's why they're cutting back on library, and why they're cutting back at the youth and bounty centers, and some of these other things, and also partly because of some of their decisions. But I think that because we're a larger community, and we have larger aspect of bringing those in through some of our tax base and through some of our, our, you know, our assessments on our land and those kind of things, that we're gonna feel the impact a little bit later. And all we're asking is for a four-month grace period between the first quarter of what we're doing, and then we'll bring those in front of the commission, and we'll, you know, be more than happy to accommodate as how the commission would want to look at that. But, you know, it seems like there's this mad rush before the end of the year to get this all done. And we have been inundated with a lot of requests from a lot of different departments. And it's not that we're telling any specific department. In fact, we started taking those head-on on an individual basis. But what occurred was that there was one case that somebody didn't get, and it came in front of the commission, and then all of a sudden, now it seems like everybody's upset and that we're not moving in that direction. And that's not the case at all. The case is, is that we're wanting to just make sure that we have the funding there appropriately within the next year, that we don't have to consider layoffs, or that we don't have to consider digging into the 399 or any of these other areas, and that we can do that. And so, again, I encourage and would more than willing like to sit with commissioners individually and talk about individual cases and specifics, once we have the time to do the background information on those individuals.
Thank you. We will take that opportunity, so thank you. So Commissioners, we have a motion, maybe take a five-minute break so we can stretch our legs a little bit.
Let's do that, so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. A second call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. Motion to come back in person, serious. So move. We have a second, a second, call for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. Item eleven, budget matters, discussion, consideration, decision regarding following DFA resolution. The Onardo Cordova Finance Director, DFA Resolution Fifty-One, a resolution requesting to adjust the 2013 FY final budget and transfer temporary gas break, litter control M. And it says beatification from the general fund. And I don't know who we're beating, but I think it's supposed to be beautification.
Yeah, we try to make it pretty and not...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this DFA Resolution Number Fifty-One is basically funding a temporary loan so that they can expend this grant and then get reimbursed after the expenditures. And this is coming in for you so we can get it done before the end of the fiscal year.
So move to approve. Start with Mr. Chairman. I have a motion, a second, discussion, sitting. Not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
We'll go on to number two, DFA Resolution Number Fifty-Two, a resolution requesting to adjust the FY 2013 final budget to account for the expenditures of a 2012 Ford F-450 ambulance. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, DFA Resolution Number Fifty-Two and Fifty-Three pretty much go hand in hand. I'll give you a quick background before I actually go into the details. But apparently, the county purchased Ford F-450 ambulance back in, I believe, October or November. There was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant or award that came from the hospital. What happened was the actual cost of the vehicle was somewhere in the hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar range. The award came and it got deposited into the 509, which is our EMS budget. The original budget for the vehicle was established in the 222, the Fire Excise. And so what these two moves are gonna do is take the expense out of the Fire Excise and put it into the 509 in order to match where the revenue was for that grant. But you'll only see the expense of a hundred and twenty to match the exact grant. The difference stayed in 222. To get into the details of it, the first one, DFA Resolution Fifty-Two, we're adjusting the final budget to account for that expenditure, so creating the expenditure in the 509 with this resolution. so creating the expenditure in the 509 with this resolution. And then the next one will be moving it over. So, DFA Resolution Number 52 creates the budget expenditure for the ambulance.
So move for approval.
I will second, Mr. Chairman, the motion and a second, discussion, committee.
Mr. Chairman, is this the, that one particular ambulance that doesn't fit in all roads?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, as I understand it, that's what I understand, I haven't seen it yet. I'm excited to see it someday, it's quite a big vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's correct, it is the big vehicle that was ordered by the previous director.
So, Mr. Chairman, is there a reason as to why it was ordered to this size? If they knew it wasn't going to go into some county roads?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't feel like I can answer that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this was within the transition period of me coming in that this actually got ordered. It was left up at that point to the previous EMS director who wanted to primarily use it for transports. The issue is because of the size of the vehicle and because of the height of the vehicle, it cannot be used on any of our smaller county roads or to get into any residences within Taos County. And so the primary use that we've been using it for at this point in that I directed staff is for transports on major highways. Also, when we have issues like the Red River or any of those other transports out of those areas that we're going to be basically using those on the major roads. We do have two other ambulances, and then we have one in for repair. Part of what we're going to try to do with the one in for repair is actually put it on a different chassis so that we would have four ambulances available to Taos County at any time. But the primary use of this one, we did, when the ambulance arrived after it had been ordered and when the previous manager was gone, we tried to see if we could, before we put any lettering, before we put anything on that vehicle, to send it back and actually get a smaller vehicle with a smaller chassis. We would lose, just like any other car lot that you drive it off the car lot, basically you'd lose 30% of the value of the vehicle of what you actually paid. So the decision at that time was that we couldn't afford to use that amount of value. So what we're trying to do is direct the use of that vehicle into its best capacity. Staff complained that it's difficult for larger individuals to get into the vehicle because of the height of the cap. All of those things were not taken into consideration when it was first started.
And Commissioner, one of the other things is, the reason I think they ordered this vehicle is it was four-wheel drive.
It's four-wheel?
And I think that's, that's one of the reasons that they were wanting to try a four-wheel drive so that they could actually access some of the county roads in the winter time. That was, what was brought to us when this was proposed and the four-wheel drive vehicle, you know, and even now to run that four-wheel drive vehicle up and down the road is going to be a kind of a burdensome to the county because it costs more to run that type of vehicles.
Fuel wise?
Yes. So on Resolution Number 52, Commissioners, what's the wish?
Move for approval.
We already have a motion. We already have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. So then, DFA Resolution Number 53, a resolution requesting to transfer expenditures from the Fire Excise Tax Fund to Emergency Medical Service Fund to account for the vehicle purchase, vehicle purchases of 2012 Ford F-450. Commissioners, I think we've heard from Mr. Cordova.
So move to approve. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
We have motion and a second, any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. Item B, Budget Line Item Adjustment, the Leonardo Cordova Finance Director, our county attorney's line item budget.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, a budget adjustment is needed to allocate additional budget to cover salary and benefits through the fiscal year end for the previous county attorney. We're also going to increase printing and publishing by an additional $300. The budget adjustment is funded by balances in litigation and judgments that we don't anticipate funding through the end of the fiscal year. So you'll see the increases for full-time position, FICA, FICA Medicare, Para, retiring healthcare, and then the increase for the printing and publishing, all coming out of litigation and judgments for a total amount of $15,355. Staff recommends approval, staff request.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
I have a second, discussion, not call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Elected officials report, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the following. I don't see any of the elected officials, maybe they're boycotting us, but I think the clerk's office is here, so go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just for the commission's information, the sheriff did leave his report. I will pass it out. He had to leave because they're gearing up for the Mumford and Son concert and they're having a planning meeting today on doing that, but I will pass that out. And I will walk over and check with the other elected officials real quick to see if they have any reports. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Malone. So in the clerk's office, we have issued nine new business licenses. We have not opened any new probates. And as you might be aware, in the Bureau of Elections, we are working on the capital tax improvement for the Piñasco School. So we are doing the early voting, and the election date for that is June 18. The early voting started on May 24, and it'll end on June 14. On election day, the proceedings will be consolidated. The residents of Piñasco, Rio Lucio, Badito, Placitas, Rodarte, Yano, and Picoriz will vote at the Piñasco Community Center. And residents of Chamisal, Trampas, El Valle, and Ojosaco will vote at the Sam Cordova Senior Center. And I just, Anna and I just really want to say thank you to our employees because without them, a lot of this stuff wouldn't get done. So we really want to tell them thank you and we appreciate what you may do. And that's all we have today.
But we want to thank you guys because I think a lot too, a lot does. We appreciate the work and the work of your guys' staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I don't know that we need to table those items, do we, Mr. Malone? If you want to, let me just, if you want to hear them later.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to hear them later, or we just, we don't need to table?
We can do so, Mr. Chairman, move to table and we can hear them later.
Well, I think the only one that we would need to table is starting the hill of the assessors, et cetera. Okay, go ahead.
I was asked by the assessor to reflect that her and the deputy assessor are training today and would not be able to attend the meeting, but they will present a report at the next available opportunity.
Okay, so they're no need? So, okay, no need? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll take my motion off. On the county matters, important matters, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the following, adoption of amendment, referendum, under understanding, between the town of Taos and Taos County for PSAP, PSAP repeaters, Mr. Rick Ellis.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what you have in front of you is an agreement that got negotiated back and forth quite a bit, and it was narrowed down in which, I guess it's about two weeks ago, on a Friday, the flag mountain repeater went down. The town had announced, as we expected, that they would not be servicing any of the repeaters towers, any of the equipment outside of their building, other than the cell repeater, which serves the Taos Police Department. We were coming up on Memorial Day weekend, obviously this presented a major problem for us. So we had a handshake agreement by which the county would dispatch a crew to take care of that. Subsequently, the San Antonio Tower went down and we dispatched a crew to take care of that also. Eventually, there was a third problem in which we would like to publicly thank. Red River, the sheriff up there, and the gentleman handling their dispatch, as well as the molly mine, which sent a crew up to do repairs, to flag and set up a temporary backup system, which is still up there. They use their batteries and panels. The agreement was that either the town would reimburse us or they would agree to turn over all the frequencies, repeaters, towers, leases, anything they had control over outside of the dispatch building to the county. Copies were sent to all the mayors and administrators of the other participating jurisdictions. Asked them if they had any problems with it, they said no. We added one thing in there for the village of Cuesta, and that was that because their repeater tower is on a forest service lease to the requested village, that agreement respects any pre-existing agreements that the other villages might have. The reason we are doing this, other than to ensure public safety, is that there was a grant for $75,000 that came to the county. We annually get a state homeland security grant, which is predominantly used to maintain this system as well as to assist the PSAP. Any money after that is used to buy it amongst the law enforcement agencies for any special needs they might have. This year, we did a sub-grant to the town because the prior OEM director felt that the town was lagging behind getting their work done, and they did not want that to reflect on the county and hold any money that we might have. That work didn't get done. So as part of this agreement, we're asking for that $75,000 that we agreed to sub-grant to them to be returned to us. On an annual basis, that would give us the money to maintain these towers. Long-term, as some of you are aware, we've had a series of cell tower constructions throughout the county, which will go from Santa Fe line all the way to the Colorado border. The intent for those cell towers is on a commercial basis to fill in radio gaps as well as commercial cell coverage. And that those will be tied into a kit Carson fiber optic cable. They'll be run with backup solar, but on direct electric, rather than, our towers right now are pretty flimsy, they're up there on solar panels, which often get shot out or knocked down or covered with snow, and batteries, which if we get two or three snowy days, can run down. Eventually, the idea is because these cell towers were erected with the condition that the county can install its equipment at no cost unto them, and then have the redundant system of being on direct electric backup, as well as if the radio system fails, we can go through the fiber optic system. So that's our goal in two years from now. So these towers, which are aging and in very bad condition, will probably become abandoned. But for now, I think it's critically important, given that we have 11, soon to be 13, volunteer fire departments heavily dependent on these. They don't have funds to go out there or the technical expertise to maintain the towers. The village of Cuesta has clearly stated that it does not have the staff or money to maintain them. And we, as the county, rightly so, get the money to do that. I think it's appropriate for us to step in and do this. In addition, if at some point you as commissioners decide that we are not going to go with the new PSAP with the town, this will give us an existing network. We don't have to go out and figure out where we're going to get it from. I do want to be clear on a couple of things. That grant is set to expire on June 30. And so, A, there is no guarantee that it will be extended. B, there's no guarantee that despite the fact that as a term of this agreement, the town agrees to a letter, which we have a draft of in there, requesting that it be transferred back to us. There's no guarantee that that in fact will happen. But the alternative is, we would probably, as we have so far, wind up having to repair these towers anyway and bear the cost of it. I will say this, the one thing we've discovered since I spoke to you last is that everyone was under the impression that the town had been paid in full for the PSAP service for the year. In fact, they have not, there's a check for just slightly over $70,000 as the last payment, which we discovered had not yet gone out of the building, and we directed the help. And I guess, while that's not directly connected to this agreement, certainly there has been discussion by some of the commissioners that if services provided under that JPA have been reduced, that are we not entitled to reduce value of what we're paying for that contract? And in fact, as Commissioner Romero knows, we had a meeting with DFA and we're more or less advise that.
Commissioner Duran? Why is it that the town refused to maintain this repeater?
They've been doing it since 1998, now suddenly they've decided that it's not their responsibility.
But let me ask you this, I mean, the old agreement of the JPA stated in there that they would rent it.
Yes.
And now that they refuse to, no legal action, you know, what I mean? This is a big deal to me.
I agree, Commissioner.
If they should have, you know, they should have come before us, quite six months ago. You know, we're looking into, we're not going to maintain these repeaters no more. Try and see what the county's going to do, you know what I mean? Can we go take legal action under the old JPA?
The short answer is we can take legal action. The longer answer is that it's not going to give any, any resolution for a year and a half, two years.
And by doing this, this would get us some type of resolution. Plus, I think by withholding payment to them, we basically, oh, we got, we got money that we owe them. Yes.
$70,000 of their money.
And it costed us how much to maintain them, not 15, or 11?
We've spent approximately $3,200 so far. We transferred, in any that you were not here, we transferred $10,000 for this year to get us through to July 1.
And now they're up and running and we're okay?
They're up and running. We also have an estimate on the condition of all of the repeaters and what it would cost to fix them. And that's how we came up with that $75,000 figure. And we might not want to do that full $75,000 if we, in two years, are going to move to another system that won't require any maintenance, so I report.
Commissioner Romero? This agreement was put together by our legal staff or by the town of Taos legal staff?
I drafted the agreement and it was sent to the town. They edited some terms and then we submitted it to our legal departments.
Okay, and so, Mr. Chairman, with regards to item 11, assuming the responsibility, reliability of any actions or failure to act as regards to repeaters, regulations, frequencies prior to this agreement, is that sufficient language? As we know, there was an incident that happened a few weeks ago that may have happened because of the situation with these repeaters, of which the county or the town at the time had immediate control and responsibility in making sure that they were maintained well. I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, Rick, that the county is protected with regards to situations that may have occurred prior to this agreement.
Commissioner Romero, assuming, and I think it's a correct assumption, that we had no responsibility for maintenance and repair prior to setting this agreement, then we're not going to be responsible for past events. And this agreement makes clear that we're not adopting or taking on.
Liability.
Liability. Now, if somebody could make out a case that somehow we did have some responsibility back then, this agreement can't deal with that. But I know of no argument that we had any responsibility back at that time.
So, Mr. Chairman, is the language contained in item 11 sufficient to protect us at least?
As long as we had no responsibility for anything at that time, correct?
As long as we had no responsibility for anything at that time, correct?
It is sufficient.
Commissioner Blenkin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, under this agreement, the fifteen thousand dollars, just correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just saying, under this agreement, the fifteen thousand dollars that's outstanding now, we're saying is going to come out of reserves that have been built up under the JPA.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's correct. Reviewing those bills that originally presented to the county, we felt they were not eligible, but they would have been eligible under the seventy-five thousand to do repairs to the towers. Unfortunately, the town did not get prior approval for those expenditures, so they're ineligible.
So, the town's agreeing to use the reserve that's been built up to make the payments on the work that's been done to date?
Yes, Commissioner, and I believe that's fair, given that they were repair duties related to those towers.
And so, you said that this would transfer the existing network to Taos County?
That is correct.
And do you mean this would transfer the repeaters? Is that how you're defining the network?
The repeaters and the licenses for all of the frequencies that are used by all of the entities within the county.
Mr. Chairman, I need to chime in on that point. That is not entirely accurate. This is more like a quick claim. The town is not willing to take the position that they own these things. They're saying that they are transferring to Taos County whatever ownership or legal interest they have, so we need to be clear that it's more like a quick claim deed than anything else.
Yeah, is there any evidence that they actually own the repeaters? The repeaters are under a lease, so they're transferring nothing to us, is my opinion.
I would agree with that, Commissioner. They're giving up any interest they may have.
And they don't have any. So, now, I'm not as clear on the licenses as I am on the repeaters themselves. How does that work? Are there licenses that are actually in the name of the town?
That is correct. Half of the repeaters have frequencies that during the narrowbending process last year were transferred to the town. The other half remain in the county's name. There's ten total. We have five, they have five.
And if we get the remaining five, what good does that do us?
Well, one of the largest arguments we've had was that under the terms of the current JPA, in case that the JPA expires, the town has claimed that it owns everything that it has managed. So, again, with the idea that this is a quick claim, that they will assist us in returning those frequencies to the control of the county, not that we intend to charge anybody for them, but that we're not going to be blackmailed.
Well, if we each have five frequencies, does that enable each entity to run their own system if it comes to that, as is before this agreement?
They're retaining the frequency that they use for the town police department and the one repeater they use for the town police department. The rest would be under either the county or its partners in the JPA, which is Cuesta.
I'm not sure that I see any value in that either. And it's unclear to me how the seventy-five thousand dollar grant is going to come back and what it's going to be used on. So, I see, you know, you've handed us this letter that asks the DFA to... There's a couple of options here, but the purpose is to allow the county to use the seventy-five thousand dollars. And would that be strictly for maintaining the repeaters?
Commissioner, there is an existing scope of work for that contract which identifies state paid for a needs assessment of all the repeaters and the work needed to be done. That became the basis for the grant and it would be limited to that work.
So, it's more like a study of what's needed rather than actual capital improvements?
No, it identifies the specific hardware and labor associated by a repeater that needs to be done.
That needs to be purchased and installed?
Yes.
And what happens if neither the town or the county gets that seventy-five thousand?
Well, we have approximately thirty thousand dollars from our last homeland security grant which we carried over, which could be applied. In addition, we should shortly, as of July 1, be getting another appropriation of the homeland security grant.
And by this agreement, we're assuming that responsibility, so what we're saying by this agreement is if we don't get the seventy-five, then we're going to use the county's money from this source or that source to do what's necessary.
We're going to, my suggestion would be, we continue to use the homeland security grants. The seventy-five thousand was originally our grant and we asked for it to be sub-granted to the town for that work.
And we did that because they had responsibility under the JPA to take care of the repeaters?
Correct, and we were concerned that they might not get the work done in time and that that might jeopardize our funding in the future, so we separated their work out.
Was there any thought in this agreement to include another provision that asks them to account for the capital reserve account or asks them to commit that to future expenditures rather than take them on ourselves?
As for the accounting of the capital account, if you recall, we sent a letter to DFA requesting audit of that account.
I do recall, but I mean, since we're talking about an agreement with the town itself, we could make, take the direct approach, you know, and say, okay, as long as we're signing this MOU, please give us an accounting of the reserve because there seems to be a lot of confusion about how much is left in that.
Under the circumstances and the urgency, I did not feel that that was something they were going to agree to.
And then number nine that was originally in, I'm assuming that the town requested that be deleted? Number nine, where we agree to coordinate with the DFA, and this is related to our letter to the DFA.
Actually, I, the stricken language, I struck that out and added ten and eleven. The language in red in the original copy you were seeing, I inserted. I felt that the language in nine was rather ambiguous and endeavored, but I understood their concern, which was, as has earlier been stated, they can't give away, they weren't going to guarantee giving us something they didn't actually physically have that ability to do. So, we modified it in ten and eleven to state that to whatever extent possible, they would cooperate with us.
Assuming we adopt this agreement then, and let's just assume that we don't work anything out with the town and we each have our own PSAP, we're going to still be obligated to maintain the repeaters, but they would be able to use the repeaters? If they move into the command center, let's say, and we move into the planning department, are they going to be able to use the repeaters that we're taking over maintenance for?
Only if the county agreed to that. The agreement states, again, that they would only have access to the repeater and frequency for the cell repeater to serve the town PD. However, it does say for an emergency basis that they would be able to access frequencies that we all use for common communications. I believe that's public law.
Last question.
Don't debit yourself, Commissioner.
It's almost lunchtime. It's past lunchtime. What consideration has the administration given to sending a demand letter for the town to live up to their responsibilities under the JPA to maintain the repeaters and along with a notification that since they have breached that, we are holding back the seventy thousand dollars that's still owed on the existing year's payment? Any thought or discussion given to that approach?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll take a little bit of that on. Last week, in an email conversation with Oscar from the town of Taos, in which the commission was CC'd on, basically, I basically told him that they have that responsibility until February 29th or March 1st of 2014. They continue to have those responsibilities. They are looking at cutting back in all forms of services, which is also the sex offenders' registry program and some of these other things. And so, what we've been trying to do is basically say and hold on to the JPA. Unfortunately, as we've seen and what we've known, I mean, and what continues to happen, is that their staff gets a different direction from their council or their mayor or their city manager and basically told that they're no longer going to maintain those repeaters. They're no longer to send the bills to the county or send them to Cuesta or send them to whoever's going to do it. And we just keep saying back to them that it's their responsibility. The issue of the seventy thousand that Taos County is currently holding is that we just now became aware that that check actually hadn't gone out from our portion. And so, we directed staff to hold that money at this point until we could get it in front of the commission and make that determination as to if that's the policy you guys want to push forward on that.
From my perspective, I want to know how much is left in reserve and what are the plans to spend that money? Last I heard, there was a quarter of a million dollars in reserve. Then I hear all kinds of conflicting opinions about where that money is and what it's supposed to be spent on. I'd like to know that from the town. I think we have the right to an accounting of those reserves under the JPA and I think we have a right to know why the town is relinquishing their responsibility to maintain the repeaters. And I think that we have leverage because we owe them seventy thousand. And so, I would like to see us use that leverage to get this information that they should be telling us anyway.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly on that same point, maybe it's implicit in what Commissioner Blenkin said, that if that's the direction the commission wants to go, it would not make sense to approve this agreement because we would lose all that leverage at this point.
Yeah. Thank you, that was my fault.
I would ask the commission to revert back to the comment the county turned in eight earlier, which is that that's all good and well, but that could take a year and a half to figure out. And if the direction of the county commission is the next time a repeater goes down, to just ignore it, I don't, then I think we do have liability because they are our fire departments, they are our sheriff's office, they are our EMS, we're a jury user, we know that. And there are other areas. We already know that sheriff's department has complained they've cut back because they're not doing after five o'clock and on weekend non-emergency dispatch. I've had a discussion with the dispatch staff in which they've indicated that openings they have are not being filled. They're reducing all over and I'm not too sure, given that Cuesta hasn't paid them since 2006, according to our last stakeholder meeting, that us holding back the seventy thousand dollars is going to motivate them to change their direction anytime soon.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this doesn't fix any of that. And when the county attorney referred to a year and a half, I believe what he was referring to was to determine whether or not we owe the seventy thousand. It would take the court system a year and a half. What I'm asking for is using the leverage that we have on the money we owe them to ask the town to answer these simple, direct questions first. And then, once we get that answer, we know where the money is, where it's supposed to be spent, and what their position is on why they're no longer fulfilling the obligation that they clearly have, then we can consider this MOU.
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, with regards to the idea that Commissioner Blenkin has with regards to knowing exactly where these monies are, the letter that we sent DFA recently, I believe it's been sent out already, doesn't cover that request to know exactly where these expenditures and monies have been used?
It asks, excuse me, it asks for a full audit of all forms of repeaters that were paid by the JPA partners used by the fiscal agent, including the reserve account.
So, we should have an answer within a reasonable time?
I believe when you and I were there, they said that if that request came within forty-eight hours, they could get us an answer.
Within a reasonable time? Hasn't happened?
Hasn't happened.
Okay. Mr. Art, it's been, how long ago was that letter sent?
About a week, ten days.
About ten days.
I believe part of the holdup is that for about a week there, one of the two parties we addressed the letter to was on vacation and the other party, Bill Range, indicated that he would not be able to respond to the request available.
Mr. Art Chivetta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in lieu of Commissioner Blenkin's request, we can send a letter to the town of Taos, basically requesting an accounting of that reserve where that money has been spent and what that is and we can do that by the next day or so and get that request out there.
And thank you for that, but you know, my suggestion is that we also give them notice that we do not intend to pay the seventy thousand dollars unless we get a satisfactory explanation of why they are relinquishing their responsibilities to maintain the repeaters under the JPA.
That's the wish of the commission.
Is that in the form of motions?
Yes.
Are we acting within our scope of what the item that's on the agenda today or are we able to?
Commissioner Romero, I think that the agenda item would not allow us to take a vote on what Commissioner Blenkin has proposed. It would allow us, of course, to not enter into the MOU and it would certainly be within the commission's authority to indicate that its preference was that the staff engage in the activity that Commissioner Blenkin suggested.
Then I'll change the motion. Thank you, Mr. Malone. I'm going to, and I'm, you know, wide open to additional discussion here from staff on this, but I'm going to make the motion that we don't adopt this agreement with the town and in lieu of that, direct staff to take the alternate approach that's been discussed.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is an elected county attorney, but I can give you the legal basis for which I think has some credibility as to why they don't believe they have to pay for those towers, but I'm not sure you would want me to do that now. And I don't know that there's the ready to do that in a close as part of an executive session.
Potential litigation?
The exception for potential litigation would be appropriate if we were considering suing the new JPA, which I think at this point, Commissioner has asked that question. So, I think that would be appropriate. We could add to the executive session that discussion.
I would ask that you do that because I think it's a rather important piece of information to have. I would also ask that if you do, go ahead, not do the MOU, that you direct staff as to what we are to do when we get a call that the towers are down, because we already had three or four incidents in less than two weeks.
Mr. Chairman? Let me ask you some questions. I believe about as good as this MOU, what will be happened today or will be happened?
Is that being directed to legal?
You know, because right now, it looks to me like we're doing a rock. Yeah, I can do it, no, I don't know.
I'd be happy to address what I think is a policy question and not a legal question and Commissioner Doran, if you want me to address that, I will. I mean, what this comes down to is there's, the town has said... I mean, what this comes down to is there's, the town has said they're not going to maintain these repeaters, and that system is necessary to 911 in this county, and the county citizens of this county depend upon that system working. So what we stand to lose is that we're taking on a financial responsibility we don't currently have. What we stand to gain is that we protect the lives of the citizens of the county. That's a simple, straightforward analysis of it, but that's policy, not legal.
So then, what you're telling me is that it'd be best that we adopt this MOU, right?
Again, I don't think that's the province of the County Attorney, I'd be happy to opine, but, I mean, that's, that's a policy decision.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, so Rick just asked a good question, okay. So what happens if these repeaters go down in the future and we don't have this agreement? Will we include in our letter the fact that we're going to use the 70,000 to maintain these repeaters? This agreement gives us nothing but liability. They're transferring ownership of repeaters they don't own. I'm not the least bit surprised that the town is anxious to sign this agreement. I really don't, I really don't get it. I mean, I think that we are better served by using the 70,000 that we owe them to let them know, A, it's your responsibility, B, since you're not taking the responsibility, we're going to take the money that we would otherwise owe you and expend it towards these repeaters.
So let's ask this question, that's why you made that motion?
That's why I made the motion. And, you know, I'm willing to be convinced otherwise, still.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's actually why I calmed down, but Rick asked the question and came back up. I also want to remind the Commission to keep in mind is that the 70,000 that we currently have for this fiscal year, part of the agreement on the JPA is basically in July, that starts new again for the 287,000, that would have been prorated till February of next year. And so in reality, we would have some of that money, and correct me if I'm wrong, again, for July forward, that would take us from July to February if we needed to fix those repeaters. I think, just to shed a little bit of history and light on this, is that staff have gone back and forth with the Town of Taos. As far as, as you well know, we've made recommendations once to take over the 911, we've asked to take it up to Red River. Part of what, when we were looking at taking it up to Red River, the Town of Taos was saying, "Well, I don't know how you guys are going to do that, because you guys don't own the repeaters, and you don't have the frequencies, and we're not going to release those things." And so part of what we were trying to do too, is for the future, moving forward in the aspect of the 911 and bringing that into the town, we're also thinking if we could, and Commissioner, I agree, it probably doesn't solidify that, but it gives us a step closer that the town's not going to fight us through this agreement on trying to obtain and keep those frequencies and those repeaters. But it's the will of the Commission as to how we move forward with this. I see arguments on both sides, I feel that the town has that responsibility. I personally, as a manager, feel that wherever the PSAP is, should have access to those repeaters, and people shouldn't be held hostage by anybody for any service within Taos County if we're looking at health and safety and welfare of our constituents. And I think that's what the town, on some level, is trying to do, and we're just trying to think and figure out ways to circumvent that system so that we can move forward and provide that service to our constituents across Taos County.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion and make a motion to table the decision on the MOU, or until we've had a chance to discuss a potential lawsuit against the town in executive session regarding their breach of the JPA.
I'll withdraw my second, Mr. Chairman.
So then, Commissioner Blankenhorn, do you want to make a motion to amend the agenda to include that item under our executive session?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, our question is, for our attorney, are we going to be able to add on it today if it falls into executive session, are we going to be able to come out, make a decision on that, or if it wasn't posted specifically in executive session?
Commissioner Meloni, you can clearly act on the MOU, which is to deny it or not, as the case may be. In terms of the question about how to further proceed, it would have to just be advice, it cannot be a fondu.
Okay.
So then, we do have a motion to include, or amend the agenda to include this under the executive session?
How do I?
As item B, we do have a second to that, and under what exemption will we be citing, Mr. Chairman?
Potential litigation, okay?
So no further discussion, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes.
So we'll break for lunch.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, a second to break for lunch. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes.
Misses, we have a motion to come back into session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, now a second, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes. So we, Misses, before we broke for lunch, we were hearing a...
Mr. Bellis had presented us with a document.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
On the PSAP?
County Resolution 2013-32, I believe it was. Correct, Rick?
13-32 of the last document. Just make sure that we have the right item.
That was the next item in the business, correct?
Yeah.
But...
Do you want to bring back item A?
Item A, since we're not going to go into executive session to hear, we felt that there might be conflicts or...
So move, Mr. Chairman, to bring back the previous item that we had been discussing with regards to the agreement of the Town of Taos on the receiver stations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, we also have Alan Sanchez, I've asked him to come up in case the Commission has any questions of him referencing item A.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was the motion.
Okay, do we have a...
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Chairman Brody?
Yes.
So, Mr. Bellis, do you want to address this, or Mr. Meloni?
I'd be happy to address the point that I was going to talk about, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bellis and I talked over lunch, and he pointed out to me some language in the JPA that he had originally thought he needed to discuss in executive session, but after looking at it, it doesn't appear to me to be that sensitive or require executive session. And, Mr. Bellis, with your permission, I'll comment on it, rather than switching back and forth. Mr. Bellis pointed out to me that on page, my copy of the JPA doesn't have pages on it, but it'd be Roman numeral seven, which is at the top of the page. It's called Equipment and Maintenance.
Bottom of the page six.
Apparently, the town has previously alleged to Mr. Bellis that they believe that only three repeaters are in their responsibility for repair and maintenance, and it was based on that Roman numeral seven. And so if you look at the language, it starts, the second sentence of that paragraph, additionally, additionally, the cost of maintenance of all such equipment, including repeater leases, and then there's a parenthetical, including Pico de East, North, and South repeater shall be included in the yearly assessment. Apparently, they were taking the position with Mr. Bellis that somehow that meant that only Pico de East, North, and South repeaters were their responsibility for maintenance, but any normal English language reading is that that only relates to leases.
Right.
And so, I just don't have any concern about that, and didn't feel like we needed to turn into executive session under potential litigation to talk about that. I should comment additionally, that over the lunch hour, I looked at the remainder of the lease, I think that, like many of these old contracts, it's not as clear cut as it should be, but there are numerous places in the JPA that include repeaters in the equipment that's to be maintained. So, you know, I can't guarantee that if it ever came to that, we would win, but it seems to me we have a much stronger case on that front.
Mr. Bellis, Mr. Sanchez, did you have anything to add?
Just, not that I want to say it on camera, but you had, the Commission had asked the staff to come up with options, so that we were not quite, particularly in light of services that have been reduced. And, quite honestly, anybody can build a building, we already have a building, anybody can buy the equipment, it's readily available, but the FCC licenses, it would be a battle to get those away. It would take time, even if they agreed to transfer them, and having the towers, if we don't do this deal, and the position is that we're not getting anything out of it, so let's not do it. You might as well just agree to go to Kid Carson, because you don't have an alternative, because there's nothing Alan can do, nothing I can do, or anybody can do that we're going to set up FCC licenses and alternative repeater sites within six months, I just don't think it's realistic. So it gives us negotiating room. Quite honestly, I think it's the best deal we were able to get from the town, considering their desire to not want to negotiate with us at all, or give us anything that would make it easier for us to have any alternative other than to go to Kid Carson. And I think a number of you have been in meetings where we've heard that, that no matter what else, we're going to Kid Carson, everything else is negotiable. I guess, that's about it.
Chairman, Commissioners, I think the only thing that I would add with what Mr. Bellis said, is if we don't kind of try and work this deal out, if some of the options we've discussed, using the planning building, if that's the route we go, then we are going to have to look at constructing new repeater sites at that time at an additional cost. One of the other things is, even now with the town planning meeting for the Monfer Concert, they're using South repeater as one of their primary frequencies, and it's basically being, and it was basically told to the sheriff, "We understand that's your primary frequency for the day-to-day operations, but we're using it." So it's like they're kind of taking a total ownership with a lot of the frequencies and how they're being utilized. So I think in the long term, it's going to probably create some issues, unless we can secure those back under the county's name.
Mr. Chairman, right now, they're being repaired, modeled, renovated, what sort of a lifespan do you give them at this point, after all of this renovation is done, or fixing and rebuilding one of these things?
There's going to be, Chairman, Commissioners, as far as the lifespan, the lifespan can be indebted as long as they're maintained properly. I mean, there are going to be some items that need to be replaced on a regular basis, and that's probably every two to three years, like the deep cycle batteries on the solar sites, maybe some solar panels, that's probably going to be most of the normal wear and tear. There will then have to be some additional costs if something out of the ordinary takes place, if one of the sites gets hit by lightning, that could totally fry all the wiring and the radios, so we would have to then go back in at that point, but that doesn't really happen that often. And then, whenever a new generation of radio comes into play, that we need to change out the radio, that would be an additional cost at that point.
So, Mr. Chairman, with regards to this agreement, this is only between the Town of Taos and Taos County. What about the other parties that utilize these repeaters? How does that affect this particular agreement? Shouldn't the agreement be between the town and Taos County and the other parties, or just...
Chairman and Commissioners, most of the other sites kind of go off a myriad of some stuff, like Cuesta gets repeated through Flag, and that's a relay goes to, the North repeater goes to Flag, then goes to Cuesta, and then there's like the Amalia repeater, which is just specifically for the Amalia area. All the other repeaters that can either be utilized to broadcast are either owned by the town, which is on the water tank here within the town, or some of the other frequencies that can be used are maintained by Red River, and like Sawmill, and some of the other repeater sites up in the Red River area.
So the repeaters that we are talking about today are located where? Pico de East?
South repeaters on Pico de East, North repeaters on San Antonio Mountain, and then Flag is on Flag Mountain. Those are the three primary repeaters that we use.
Are there any others?
Well, like I said, there's the Amalia repeater that is specifically for county use, but it's not part of the network system, it runs through a bunch of relays to go ahead and hit that repeater as well.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we're trying to do here is make sure that if we decide to go along, we have access to repeaters that would allow us to go along. Is that correct?
Commissioner and Chairman, that would be correct. These sites are already established, we would basically be taking ownership in return for doing the maintenance on them. If we didn't have those sites, then we got to come into agreements with the landowners of where those sites are located, come to a contractual agreement to go ahead and get to those areas, put in a new tower, a new structure for the equipment, new solar panels, batteries, basically be starting from scratch on a lot of these sites.
Who owns these three repeaters?
From my understanding, they were always county equipment, the frequencies were licensed to the county. Recently, as of January of this year, when five out of the six licenses went for renewal, they were renewed under the town's name. So, and according to the way the JPA was, it was kind of understood that they were the ones to do the maintenance on them.
Now who owns the physical structures?
The physical structures, I mean, I think that's something we'd have to look into. The structures themselves aren't very big, I mean, we're talking basically just a 20-foot pole and a small structure about the size of an outhouse, just to put the equipment in. It's more of whatever was agreed upon, as far as accessibility to those locations. Pico de East, where our equipment is actually housed, the South repeater is actually housed in a building that's owned by Forest Service, so we're co-located in their structure. Flag Mountain, I think, is a standalone site, and then San Antonio, I'm not sure if we're standalone or co-joined with another entity.
Do we have any reason to believe that the buildings and the equipment on Pico de East, San Antonio, and Flag are actually owned by the Town of Taos?
That's hard for me to say at this time, Chairman, Commissioners.
And so one of my points is that if we're negotiating with the town, and we're saying we are going to assume the liability that you are legally obligated to perform under the JPA, I don't think there's any real question that, under the JPA, the town is supposed to use portions of the 280,000 we give them every year, from which we've built up a quarter of a million dollars in reserves that the town has, full control of. I don't think there's any argument that they have the liability to maintain these three repeaters. And this agreement is saying, well, if you transfer a title to those agreements, then will, to us, then we'll take over the maintenance. The problem is, is that they don't own them, and so they can't transfer something that they don't own. Admittedly, I'm not sure about this licensing thing, I'm still confused about that, and would like some more answers. I understand that we have five, and the town has five. So my question is, with the licenses that we have, are they sufficient, without this agreement, for us to operate our own PSAP dispatch?
Chairman, Commissioners, we, to run a repeater site, you need to have two sets of frequencies, there's a receiving and a transmit site. So for those three repeater locations we're talking about, should be six licenses for frequencies. Out of the six, five of them were renewed, like I said, in January of this year, under the town's name. So right now, and one of them, I'm trying to, I've been doing some research on, I haven't been able to find a renewal... been able to find a renewal of when it's up for renewal on that sixth frequency set. So right now, we only have probably in our name maybe one, because those other ones were transferred by the town of Taos under their name when they redid the renewal. Just also to add, I agree with you that that's part of the JPA and that the maintenance work should be done by the town. Obviously, it hasn't been done. There's been a lot of resistance from the town to do their maintenance work on there. And it's not just the repeater sites, it's just basically anything dealing with the PSAP at this time. They're either, have been given the direction not to allow us to make any changes. One of the changes that I need to make right now on the PSAP side, on the console side, is to add a paging tone for Carson so they can go through their state inspection to get funded. And that's something that I'm meeting a lot of resistance to even just have that update put on, on the console so that can be done. So because they're having this resistance to get work done, it's actually delaying us on some of the other projects that we have going.
And with this agreement, we could, we would then have the ability to go in and get the work done that you would like to get done?
Chairman Commissioners, if we went with the option that we could kind of discuss about going to the planning building, this makes that process happen a lot quicker if we were to go it alone as far as the repeater sites go. If we did go that option as well, if we were kind of taking care of the PSAP, then we can go ahead and make the changes that we need to make onto the consoles at any given time, whether it's GIS information, whether it's paging information for the departments, any of those types of activities.
And the transfer of the licenses is what gives us that ability?
The transfer of the licenses basically gives us the ownership on the radio frequency through the FCC.
What gives us the ability to work on the equipment that you're finding resistance getting?
Right now, it's, I think, just coming to some kind of understanding with the interim 911 coordinator.
And so what portion of this MOU gives us the right to work on, on the equipment that we don't currently have?
The MOU, to my understanding, is just for the repeater sites. It doesn't have any language towards the PSAP itself.
Okay. And so the work that you wanted to do, the physical work that you wanted to do is on repeaters or on something else?
Well, we need to do work on the repeaters just to make sure that they're maintained and that they're operating and we don't have a failure like we did a couple of weeks ago. I've been working with the 911 supervisor and the 911 coordinator, trying to take care of some of their paperwork in return to see if they'll be a little less resistant for us getting some of the other stuff done on the 911 consoles themselves.
But right now, we don't feel like we have the right to go in and work on those consoles unless we have this MOU.
Commissioner Blakenhart, to answer your question though, the MOU will not address that issue. It's still another issue that we're going to have to deal with the town of Taos.
Okay, great. I'm just trying to focus on the MOU. So, the years I can tell, the only thing we get in return for accepting the financial responsibility that they are under contract to provide is five licenses. That's, that's what we're trying to decide today, whether or not it's worth it for us to trade that off or whether we should go a different route, which is to just say, "Dear sirs, you clearly have responsibility for this. You denied that responsibility. Therefore, we're withholding payment until you live up to it."
That can follow later on? Or do we wash our hands out of that? Or do we eliminate that, that thought or by making the decision today on repeater stations, do we kind of forgive the idea of going back after some sort of compensations for those that have not been done? Great.
Commissioner Romero, I thought I followed you until the very end. Let me, let me answer, and if it doesn't make sense...
So if we answer or if we go ahead with the contract?
With the MOU.
With the MOU. Does that mean that we forgive or?
That would be inconsistent with going after them for the, what they haven't, what they've said they're not going to do. This would be in lieu of that.
So, so again, Mr. Bellis, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Archuleta, basically, we're trying to decide what the future of the E911 would be, basically, because if we, by, I guess, by approving this memorandum of understanding, it would basically give us the opportunity, if we decided to go our own way and not move into the command center, this would give us the opportunity to use these sites to enhance or to go on our own, with our own E911. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. But it would also be considered an enticement to your partners. You're not going to be the PSAP or the central provider of communication unless you can get the other partners in Taos County to agree to that. And right now, the difficulty for Ski Valley and for Questa in particular is that they don't have money to maintain these towers. The other difficulty is that if you break it apart, everybody starts on their own. For example, we thought that was a problem with Flag Mountain. It turned not to be, turned out not to be Flag Mountain. It was a, which go with the repeaters. Telephones, et cetera, acquired by the town, and that's important, acquired by the town. In conjunction with the centralized dispatch, shall be the property of the town of Taos. Now, I don't know that they can prove that they acquired all the equipment. Certainly, they can show that some of the replacement equipment they put into the towers is theirs, but at the same time, I haven't found anybody that can show that we're responsible for the towers and antennas and equipment that's up there either. And so what we're really buying is we're not going to have a big cat fight over who the frequencies, and they don't have to surrender the frequencies, but have a fight over at least who the equipment and who the leases belong to.
Commissioner Leinkner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if the town gives up these five licenses under this agreement, they would still be able to operate their own PSAP at the command center to handle their own E911 and dispatch?
The language, let me answer this first. The language says that they can, they maintain their frequency on the tower, the water tower for the Taos PD, and that in emergency circumstances, we will allow them to access the other frequencies. But it doesn't expressly give them the right to those frequencies.
Chairman Commissioners, these aren't shared frequencies day in, day out. I mean, town PD does have their own repeater set. Taos Fire has their set of frequencies as well. Public Works, a lot of their city services have their own repeater frequencies that are licensed under the town of Taos. So the ones that are in question would just be, like Mr. Bellis said, in case of emergency, they could go ahead and access them if needed, if their system went down. But they would have enough stuff to maintain their own PSAP.
Mr. Ramon, if we add into this MOU, obviously, we're taking responsibility from the date signed forward. Could we then, as Mr. Bellis suggested, still come back to the town and say that you failed up to the date of this MOU to maintain the repeaters in good, in good operating order and therefore we're calling a breach and cutting back on what we own?
If, if we could, if we could quantify those amounts, that would be a legitimate position to take again. Without thinking through a lot more than the top of the head answer, I wouldn't want to give you the odds of preventiveness on that, but it would be a legitimate position if we could quantify what had predated this agreement.
Yeah, we can quantify that by all the bills we pay under this agreement.
Mr. Chairman Commissioner, I think one way to quantify that would be that the county actually did subgrant that 75,000, and there was a determination made and accepted by the town and DFA that there was $75,000 worth of deferred maintenance over the way for that disagreement in there. But I might also clarify that that wasn't what I was suggesting in that regard. It's just that there are other services that have since been reduced by the town that are not covered by this agreement.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if I may, I wanted just to respond to Commissioner Romero. There has not been a rehab of those repeater sites, just let's not be clear about that. We have gone in and tried to just make sure that they're still operating, but there is a lot of work that needs to be done on there. Mr. Sanchez and some other people have gone up and taken pictures and, you know, some of them are rad infested. Some of them have been shot up by shotguns and everything else. So there is a lot of rehab that needs to be done.
So you haven't done the work on them yet? Because you're going to use some, some money to be able to do that?
All that's been done at this point is try to make sure that those things are up and running so the constituents can get the help that they need, but there's going to be a lot of rehab that's going to need to happen too.
So, Mr. Chairman, Steve, if this agreement is, this MOU is approved today, then you would in fact go up and do that?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we would actually have to do a complete assessment of that. We would have to see what money is available to us, like the 75,000, make sure that that's in the scope of work, and then we would have to prioritize that work because we would then be taking on that liability on some aspect that, you know, those repeaters have to be up and running and working when they need to be up and running and working. And so that would be a completed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sanchez or Mr. Bellis, but we would have to do an assessment, or we would have to definitely make sure that we do the preventive maintenance on them as quickly as possible to make sure that they're up and running and working and consistent throughout the county.
Have some motion approved?
Mr. Chairman, if you can reiterate that motion, Mr.?
To approve the memorandum of understanding of the town of Taos. This would be memorandum of standard practice?
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt very quickly so that Commissioner Duran can include it in this motion. There's one attachment that's referred to that I don't believe is on what you've been given. There's reference to two invoices that have a amount of $15,000. There's only one attached. Mr. Bellis has the other one, but he didn't find it in time to attach it. If we could get authority, you have it?
To include the invoices?
To include the invoices, yeah. Both, both the invoices. I'll send in the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just final recommendations from staff and reiterate again. Yes, yes. Anything to move forward with this?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, in my opinion, this would be the wisest thing to do from the county stance, just to go ahead and make sure that we are providing maintenance to those so we don't have any issues with constituency.
If I might say one thing, Mr. Chairman, and that is, Commissioner Blakenhart, I think you brought up a good point, and that is that you asked Alan if, in fact, they turn over the five licenses, could they be the PSAP? If I thought I was going to be the PSAP, I certainly wouldn't surrender those licenses. So I think it gives you some insight into where the town thinks things are going to go here.
Go ahead.
Chairman, could I ask a question about the licenses? If those are given by the FCC, are there any conditions for those licenses that they must maintain the repeaters that those licenses are connected to or?
Commissioners and Commissioners, there's nothing per the FCC as far as maintenance work. What the FCC license basically does, it allows you to communicate over that frequency. And there are conditions as far as use of the frequency, but it's just on language. So like basically no profanity. It has to be for the official use that the license was intended for.
Thank you.
Commissioners, get a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not called for.
Vice Ramo?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. So move on, try to be requested for a date for a public hearing to amend ordinance 2010-4, Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I believe you already have this in front of you, and it's, this is the resolution for the materials that you have a sample of. And the date being requested is July, I'm sorry, the first meeting in July, which is, I believe, the, the second.
I think Renee put in the resolution, the meeting, and I think it was later, later than the second. I think it ended up, because of the timing, having to be July, the, I don't remember the exact date, but it was...
July 16th.
Yeah.
I love James. And the intent of this is that you had heard an annual report from the Water Advisory Committee, and that's the short name. It's got a very long name that you see in the title. And the goal was to make some changes, which is to assign staff through the Planning Department to maintain the records, to basically do the same things that we do for the Planning Commission, to establish a library or depository for the records and the studies that the county has paid for in regards to water, and to allow them a broader role than originally envisioned in the ordinance, which would be to help the Planning Commission and staff in advising them on water-related development matters as well. Because this is an ordinance, we have to publish a date in advance and hold a public hearing for any changes to it. It was also shortened the name to the Water Advisory Committee.
Okay, so plan is set up, are they at the 16th?
July 16th?
16th.
Okay. Just looking for a date, right? So, tech, and a second. Any further discussion? Not called for.
Vice Ramo?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. Thank you.
Resolution number 2013-31, a resolution appointing a member to feel like vacancy on the Taos County of Lightyear Informational Committee on impacts of water appropriations and changes point of diversion, place of use or purpose of use. Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Chairman, again, there is the Skills for Water Advisory Committee. There's a current opening on that board, and the former representative was from Commissioner Romero's district, I believe, and it was Commissioner's recommendation that Alex Abada, beyond being a highly qualified engineer here in the county, also, I believe, sits on the Mutual Domestic.
He's the engineer of record for the Mutual Domestic of I...
Engineer of record, and has been extremely helpful to myself, the Planning Department Committee on a number of events. And we would ask that you accept him and appoint him to the committee so that they would have a full membership.
Well, I'll make a move to do that. I think Alex has a good choice.
Well, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Commissioner?
And invite him.
I don't think so.
Call for...
Vice Ramo?
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart?
Yes.
Mr. Dran?
No.
Chairman Brown?
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yes. Ray, could I, could I just ask a real question since we're on water? Is there any, have you made any progress on scheduling a work study with the state engineer?
We're, we still have a candidate, but we're waiting for the chairperson of the Interstream Commission to get back to us more. We're pushing, but we're hoping the next day or two to have an answer for you, and we'll email that to everybody or call you directly.
Thank you.
So, item D, request for approval of amendment number one, funding agreement number TCC 2012-04 to Onchianos.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this amendment to the funding agreement was amended to the additional $12,000 that we had with Onchianos. It's my understanding that the bill of the commission moved forward to fund the additional $3,674.23 that had been previously committed to Onchianos in a prior year. We have the documentation to show that the services will be provided within this year, and so we're asking to make an amendment to the addition, to the additional $3,674.23 in order... six hundred seventy-four twenty-three in order to provide that and pay that service within this calendar year.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? As long as there's not any more-
I think we've bled this one.
We have a lot of discussion on it.
Call for it.
Vice Ramero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhead?
Yes.
Mr. Dran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Letter E under other, report on the concert. Mr. Bellis, are you going to take that on?
Other than the fact that you're going?
And yes, Mr. Chairman, you have your VIP status. Well, you need to see me about that, but along with Mr. Archuleta. And we lost Allen, but we have had a series of meetings. In fact, there was one this morning, which I believe Allen and the sheriff were attending. The role of the county, we don't, we're not going to use the fairer grounds, which was an idea that the posse, sheriff's posse could make money. They may help out somewhere else. The sheriff's department will provide security at the detour points when they're activated, which will be Blueberry Hill on the north side of town and over by U N M on the south part of the town. The street will be closed for about two hours, at which, prior to four o'clock when the gates open, so it'll be roughly two o'clock, depends on how the crowd fills up down there. And then they'll be open during the concert and then closed again for about forty-five minutes to an hour when people let out. We're not playing a very large role, but sheriff has positioned EMS and officers both northern and south of the town, so if he's unable to get through, the equipment is already pre-staged. EMS is participating onsite during the concert. That's about it. We have one point of disagreement with the town, and that is that we believe that once the streets are closed, they should stay closed. They have a series of zone parties throughout the downtown. It's going to be a lot of people. If you have eight thousand people wandering around the small alleys and streets and cars and people drinking and cars trying to squeeze through people, we just think it creates a tremendous opportunity for an accident or clashes between people. In addition, once you, if the event is on and you open that traffic, it's just going to gridlock. And we're concerned that emergency vehicles may need to get in, take somebody out or get out. But it's the town's event, and we're going to talk to them about that situation. I think the promoters have a similar position, that they'd like to see it closed. Other than that, we're hoping everybody has a good time. We get, we split the GRTs with the town and don't have a lot of expense to that. And it'll be a good test to see for the two national promoters that involve AEG and Ligation, whether they will participate in future events. And as a result of the ordinance you passed for outdoor concerts, K-Town will be having its first outdoor concerts in five years back Friday and throughout that weekend. I think the Iguanas, which is, if you like New Orleans music, jazz music, it's a pretty darn good band. And there's a lot of events going on throughout all the other venues in the county as well.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the type of vehicles, big trucks that are allowed on some of the bridges on South Los Corbolas as well as Ranchitos, do we have any weight limits on these bridges? And are those weight limits going to be followed? Because from what I understand, a lot of the bigger equipment or bigger vehicles are going to be directed through the smaller roads.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I am not aware of any on the route that was proposed, but I will certainly get together with Rick and make sure that if there are any weight limits, that because the sheriff's department will be allowing the people in and out, that we can control that.
Can somebody let me know as to what happens when it comes out of that?
Absolutely. We'll issue a report to all commissioners.
See, because for me, that creates a burden for me. You know, I'm not allowed to leave my truck on the other side of town. I got to go through town. So I'm going to have to go either through Los Corbolas or through Ranchitos, you know? And that creates a burden for me and also, you know-
Everyone else.
And my, my kind of work, you know? You know, I'm not going to benefit a damn thing out of this. I don't want to lose out.
Look, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think the time is in the evening. I mean, what's the timeframe, Rick, that that would be doing, which is?
They could be closed from two to four. There's a group that goes on at six, and then they would be closed, which wouldn't affect you probably about, I think the last act is over at ten. So from ten to probably eleven o'clock, you could count on it being closed. We've been trying to get them to commit-
I can compensate me.
We've been trying to get them to commit to actual closure times to make it easier for people, and they've just said, well, the crowd will dictate that. I guess it would be, I'd err on the side of earlier rather than later.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I may also, in hearing over this, we have had some movement within our adult detention center. We've moved everybody out of Poteet so that we can have those rooms available. We've also asked for overtime staff to come in, and we've also asked for medical staff to be on hand. Our current capacity down there is eighty-four right now. We think that with the movements that we've done, we could probably accommodate to about ninety-two, which would be about fifteen if we had to incarcerate here in that case. But we also want to make sure that the people we are incarcerating are safe, and so that's why we've actually asked for medical staff to be on board to do assessments prior to us admitting them in. Once we get to about ninety-five, we'll probably not accept anymore. So at that point, law enforcement would have to transport out of town or they would have to let the individuals go, depending on the situation. But we would assess that. We're hoping, we're planning for the worst and preparing for that, but we're hoping that we don't actually get anybody.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully all in all that the event goes well and the people of Taus County, GRT, everything involved, everyone involved benefits positively from this.
And we hope it brings revenue to the community, and hopefully the community will prosper from this. And possibly this will be something that's more of an annual event.
Tell me, come back, Rick. Next, maybe I'll get tickets next year.
Okay, anything else on this side, Commissioners? Not? Want to, Commissioners, report the matter, discuss consideration and decision regarding the following: selection and appointment of a voting representative and alternate for the workman's compensation pool. Commissioners?
Who is, who is the, Mr. Blankenhead?
I don't like, this is a role that I think Commissioner Hata Mio used to serve on. I don't know that we've had anybody in that role since. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually did go back to the meetings of January to try to see if anybody had been assigned to this. Nobody has been assigned to this, and so we're wanting to have an appointment to this workman's compensation pool so that we can get that word of amnesty.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Mr. Blankenhead would be interested?
Maybe. I'll say to that motion. Don't give me any time to think about it.
Call for the vote.
Vice Ramero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhead?
Yes.
Mr. Dran?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
So I guess that means he is interested.
Item B, agenda notification to Taus County Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Allen. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, last Tuesday's meeting, well, I learned about this on Wednesday, I think, I was a little upset, you know? I was not notified that there was going to be another agenda, but there was a lot of them in the second session. And as one commissioner, I think that we should have a cutoff point, you know? Either be Thursday at four o'clock or Friday morning at nine o'clock so that items that are going to be in the agenda be put on the agenda. You know, I mean, no hidden agendas. And I'm, you know, I was upset about it because I'd never gotten notified, you know? So I think that we should have a cutoff point, either Thursday at four o'clock or Friday morning at nine a.m., and whatever the commission is going to put in the agenda, you know, have the guts to say and do it, you know? That's what I want.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if it's the will of the commission, we definitely entertain that measure. We do, as far as staff goes, try to make sure that we go to the agenda by Thursday at one or two o'clock so that we can assess the whole agenda, see what items seem to be on and off, or make sure that we have all the proper documentation for that. It would also help with us getting the package ready enough to the commission. I do want to say to the commission and to the public that I did have several, two conversations over the weekend with Commissioner Duran, and I apologize to the commissioner because I should have actually notified him of that agenda change. I knew that that agenda change was going to happen at five forty-five that evening. We sent the amended agenda, which is within the Open Meetings Act, but I also understand that Commissioner Duran does not have internet, and I did talk to him over the weekend, and I take responsibility for that.
So Commissioners, did we not set a deadline of maybe Friday at nine o'clock? Mr. Chairman, what is the deadline under the Open Meetings Act?
Seventy-two hours.
We have seventy-two hours, actually, so we could actually get out on Saturday. It's just staff time to get the agenda approved and pack it out into all the commissioners.
I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, with setting that deadline for Thursday prior to the commission meeting as Mr. Commissioner Duran has requested.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to take away that flexibility from staff. You just never know. I, you know, fully agree with Commissioner Duran. If I was in his shoes, I would absolutely be upset, angry, that I wasn't notified of such an important issue. And my preference is that we allow staff to have the flexibility in case something comes up, absolutely, just to reiterate to the manager that this kind of thing can't happen. That's my preference.
Thank you. What was your suggestion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm open to what the commission wants. Like I said, I will definitely make sure that it's my responsibility or the deputy manager's responsibility that we notify. If there's a change to an agenda at the last minute, we would definitely call all the commissioners to let them know. Usually what we try to do is make sure that all the commissioners get an amended agenda via email, but because of the circumstances, not all commissioners have email, and so for that reason, we need to make sure that we call them or physically take the amended agenda to their residence or get ahold of them to let them know, so.
Commissioners, does we have a cutoff point Thursday at four o'clock? This way, they at least have all day Friday to work on, maybe that time? Mr. Archuleta?
Absolutely.
Can we make a motion to that? So, yeah. So, four o'clock on Thursdays. Well, just under discussion, Mr. Archuleta, this I don't think will bind you guys up in any way. You can live within that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only bind that we would have is that there's issues that occur sometimes Friday mornings or late Friday. I mean, you know, and I, we have basically just recently sent out an email to staff trying to keep them within the timelines. We've also tried to make sure that all the paperwork's in, but unfortunately, sometimes there's going to be some of those issues that just come up, and we'll either have to carry those on to the next meeting two weeks from that date, or we'll have to ask for an amendment to the agenda. I've been asking staff that we do not have amendments to the agenda. The other thing is that I've been asking staff, is that anything that is going to be presented at the commission meeting needs to be in your binder so that you guys can read that? Us handing it out during the meeting doesn't do justice because it doesn't give you the opportunity to read and digest that, and so we've been trying to get better at doing that and not actually handing things out during the commission meeting. So, you know, part of what could happen possibly is that some projects would be delayed by two weeks until we come back to the next meeting, or we would ask for an amendment to the agenda on that Tuesday, which, again, I don't really want to get into that as a practice.
And, and Mr. Archuleta, if it comes to us the day of the meeting, if it wouldn't have been noticed, then we can act on it anyway.
That's correct.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I think I'll go ahead and withdraw my second. Based on that argument?
Mr. Chairman, I just remember having worked in staff that you just never know, and sometimes things can come up on Friday that suddenly you realize you really want forward to address the next Tuesday. And it doesn't happen very often, but I just worry about that if we set Thursday as the deadline.
And the other thing, Mr. Archuleta, if this doesn't pass, I would expect that you would do everything in your power to make sure that the commissioners are notified, even if we do have email, because even on the weekends in the mountains night or on the lake, my email, those are works. So I just want to make sure that we get notified. I think my cellphone works, but I don't get email myself.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, absolutely, and we'll put some stopgaps in place that will make sure that if there is an amended agenda sent out after the actual agenda, that everybody is notified on that, and we'll make a conscious effort to make sure that we notify each commissioner, at minimum, at least by telephone, to let them know.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I guess the key point here is communication. Just making sure that there is communication with everybody involved.
There is a motion on the floor. The second was withdrawn. Do I hear a second to that motion? I don't hear one, so the motion dies for lack of a second. So we'll just keep it the way it is for now. So, Commissioners, under the item C under the other, I don't, the only reason I put this on the agenda, and again, it was added on, give direction to staff if we want to even consider that nine-thirty meeting on, with Nancy on Thursday. Commissioners, they asked one person, because apparently there's only going to be the mayor there, and they asked so that we don't show up there with three or four people and try to get them out. God, give it up, that's what he needs. Boy, if I wasn't working, if I wasn't working, I'd be there and I'd give him a piece of wine, I guess. Because I think his big head is full of air. Commissioners, do we want to, we want to see if we can either decide, if we get some information together and at some point we can direct either one of staff or one of the commissioners to go?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that staff should be there. Mr. Bellis, our county manager, they are the ones that should make it to this interview.
Okay, I don't know that we have to give, but we want to attend. That's the whole thing. I just want to, we want to, we want to let him go through it. Okay, so then we can figure out who will go or what information we want to have. So that's all we need, some direction, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if we could, I'd really like to give staff direction on this as quickly as possible, so is there going to be one or two points that we really need to start putting bullet points together for, like, are you nine-one-one? Is that the recommendation at this point?
Or? I guess what we'll do is we'll call down and we'll get, and we'll kind of set the agenda. This is what we're going to be discussing, and that's it.
Okay.
I think this, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's a lot that, that, I'm serving the repeaters. Be prepared. And that's part of the nine-one-one, so.
Just, just, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just to say, if staff can make it, I'll be happy to go. Any item is okay with me for discussion and debate with the man, but we'll leave it up to staff. I'm just offering that in case you guys get too busy.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in lieu of that, I consider that staff provide the bullet points to Commissioner Blankenhead for discussion there. Any other information that he may need or want to make available to him?
And if we, and we need to call down and talk to Nancy down there and make sure we have something set so that it doesn't run amok and, you know, there are more on the agenda than both.
Yeah, and I guess the only reservation now that I think about it is that I would, I think anything I say would be one commissioner, and, but I guess the same reservation is even with county managers, so, and because nobody can speak for the whole commission on some of these items that remain in flux. So, and because nobody can speak for the whole commission on some of these items that remain in flux.
Exactly. And you can state that, you know, when you start off, because I mean, that's why I always do that, because at one point I have to make sure that I'm just one commissioner.
Right.
We can say that, so. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then to personnel matters, discuss consideration decision regarding the following? Executive and public session, information items, action items, discuss consideration decision regarding the termination of a former county attorney, the sign we discussed in closed session under Open Meeting Act of Amendment 10151H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Commissioners, and we also have, that's the only item we have on that. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second?
Second.
Called for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Drenn?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. I think we'll stay right here. I don't think it will take, it's not a very lengthy item. I think within twenty minutes we can get through this. We can, give us twenty minutes?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second, called for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Drenn?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes, Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission met in the executive session pursuant to exemption 10-151H2. That's the exemption for personnel matters to the Open Meetings Act in connection with the termination of a former county attorney. No vote or action was taken. Only that matter was discussed, and as I understand it, there is a motion in connection with that.
Do you have a motion to accept the county attorney's service?
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second discussion thing, not called for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Drenn?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that this board accept the seven's pay amount that was forwarded to the former county attorney.
Exactly. Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Not called for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Drenn?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes.
Commissioners, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, called for the vote.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Drenn?
Yes.
Chairman Brown?
Yes. And to all of the evening.